I shared my screen before I unmuted and then I couldn't figure out how to unmute. Sorry. So Adam Wason again, Public Works with the Facilities Maintenance Budget Request for 2022. I'll just start by saying 2020 and 2021 have been years like no others for everyone, but for the Facilities Maintenance Division as well. In addition to taking on a heavy increase in workload assisting all city departments in the response to the COVID-19 pandemic from a facilities perspective, they continued, this team continued to move forward other major capital projects. They responded to major emergencies like the summer's flooding on Kirkwood and they took the Waldron Art Center back over from Ivy Tech Community College. So JD Bora, his team and his team with Barry Wallach, Russell Flake and Christopher Smith worked hard not only to maintain the city buildings that we're responsible for, but also oversee maintaining the downtown district through our downtown specialist program and the Brighton B-Town cooperative efforts with Centerstone. Like I said, overall, we're responsible for maintaining the quality and functionality of the City of Bloomington's buildings and structures. With major initiatives around the Brighton B-Town Program, the Waldron Art Center improvements at our city fire stations, as well as now looking at our both police and fire headquarters buildings for future consideration. This is all done with four full-time employees and it's for 23 buildings of over 770,000 square feet. 2021, again, challenging year, but had some great successes. We've been getting our engineering specifications put together for modernizing our HVAC system, the digital control systems here at City Hall. So we've gotten the engineering aspect of that done. And then, like I mentioned, you know, busy summer with the damage at both the BPD and Fire Department Headquarters. We're also, this is another example in another division where we're increasing our use of technology to improve our asset management and work order efforts. That's all the, at the same time while we're continuing our professional development and safety training efforts. I do find the irony in having a picture of some guys with shovels and talking about our technology improvements, but you do have to have some nice visuals for the, for the presentations here. Our asset management efforts here are also with our Lucidity program, but these are specific to our facilities and the condition ratings for the major components of, that make up the building envelope and the building systems and controls. In 2022, we're looking to implement the scope of the HVAC study that I was talking about for the digital control system. And then we'll continue through the end of 2021 overseeing the major investments at the Waldron, while also seeing what the future of that building will hold for the community. We will also be continuing our professional development and our safety training programs through both the American Public Works Association and of course OSHA, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration. As far as the downtown cleanup, our downtown cleanup and maintenance efforts, again mentioned Chris Smith with our, who's our downtown specialist. You know, with the current, you know, closure of Kirkwood and all of the activities going on down there, we're busy each and every day. I could send you some really fun pictures of all the trash that accumulates overnight during all the revelry and such, but just tremendous efforts of Chris and the team and his efforts kind of coordinating and working with the Centerstone crews on the Brighton B-Town Program. Just some budget highlights here. Again, this is a budget that remains pretty steady from year to year without any major increases or decreases. You know, the decrease on the capital outlays, that's just due to projects that are going to be completed and carried over for next year. When I look at the category one personnel request, there is a decrease overall here, eliminating some part-time positions and reallocating some of those duties to some of our full-time positions. So overall budget requests for the Facilities Maintenance Division is just a hair over $1 million for a total of, or just over $1 million with about a 2% overall reduction in the entire budget. Happy to take questions about the Facilities Maintenance Division 2022 budget request.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wason. We will now go to council for questions as soon as I can see. Okay, council number 10.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Mr. Wason. First thing is I'll say is that I observed the Centerstone group down on West Second near the hospital and trades park area. And it was quite impressive with the leadership that our staff was showing and getting a lot of the debris picked up in the buckets and the picker upwards. And so I think that is a community asset and I just really wanted to mention that. When I look in your 2022 budget highlights, there was some discussion with renovation of our station ones and that sort of thing. I guess I want to know what is your role as Public Works Facilities with regard to any of these renovations and repairs and that sort of thing? And also as part of that, has there been any discussions that you're aware of or at least preliminary with establishing maybe a broader public safety campus that would house fire and police headquarters? It seems to combine those would reduce some of our more environmental issues and that sort of thing and just more efficient. What are your thoughts on those areas?
Well, I'll start with the first part of that question in terms of the renovations and our involvement and such, you know, yeah, obviously we did have some major plans for station one before the major flooding and now, you know, obviously some of those things have changed. The role that facilities plays is often more in the advising role and the contract management role. You know, the facilities team isn't going to get into the ins and outs and specific needs and exact needs of a fire department in terms of the building and what desires there are to have and, you know, what features of the building. They'd be more involved in helping manage the contracts, managing the contractor, the contractors and those sorts of things. You know, and then in terms of a public safety campus, you know, I know there are lots of high-level discussions, especially after the June flooding of, you know, what the future of facilities for both public safety agencies are. So, you know, we'll be actively involved and ready to assist on how any of that would move forward, but that's about all I would comment on that at this time. I know those conversations are ongoing and we're ready to assist as needed.
Okay, thank you. And just a little comment with all the things that you're discussing with us and I know all the things that you do. You and your group could probably be poster children for the term teamwork makes the dream work. And I do appreciate that and look forward to all the progress we make moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
Other questions from council members? Council member Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I wanted to get some more information about the Brighton B-Town Program with employees who are supported by Centerstone. How many employees participate through that program now and is it scheduled to expand next year or just continue at the same level?
Yeah, so right now we usually have about six to eight employees per day that participate. That fluctuates sometimes depending on how hot it is outside or if it's raining, et cetera, but it's been a great partnership. Really happy with our relationship with Greg May and the leadership team over there, the coordinators that Centerstone provides. We are actively, actively working to expand the program. We've got additional $20,21 that are available through recover forward funding. I don't think it was CARES, well, I sometimes confuse the different ones, but some recover forward funding to expand that program in partnership with ESD. And so we're actively looking to, I know our conversations with Centerstone have revolved around trying to find some more supervisors on their end to lead the crews, but we're also having some more discussions about how we could possibly expand it with our own supervision. So all that to say is I love the program. I'm very proud of what we're doing with that program. I really, you know, we've got a, we've had a really great core group of clients at Centerstone that have been, that have, some of them have been participating in this program for over two years now from when Parks originally started it. So yes, I'd love to expand it. Yes, we're trying to actively do so and truly proud of their efforts. It's a great partnership.
Thank you. Other questions from council members? Looking for hands? Okay, I think we can go to the public for public comments on the facilities budget and public work. Mr. Elizabeth, do we have anyone who would like to speak yet?
I don't see any requests to comment at the moment. Folks would like to do so, please use the raise hand feature or send a message via chat. We'll give it a few seconds. Don't see any comments.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go back to council for any other questions, comments. Council member Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I just remembered that in the spring, Bloomington was certified Lead for Cities. And I know that ESD probably took the lead on that. But I wonder if facilities must have been intricately involved as well. Can you speak to their role in securing a lead certification for the city?
So, so, you know, council member, we were not overly involved in the lead, that lead certification process, the lead for cities. That's more, my understanding and recollection is that's more to do with neighborhoods and, you know, other community services, public services and such. Were actively involved on the lead certifications for city facilities. You know, so the recertification of City Hall, et cetera, as part of the green building efforts and ordinance. So that's primarily our role. You know, I was involved in some of the lead for, I think it was lead for neighborhoods or was it?
Communities or something like that?
Yeah, so, but that was more, that's less to do with actual city facilities and our team there. Ours is more on, you know, we're working very heavily on the ParkSmart certifications with facilities and the parking garages, you know, the lead for City Hall certification, those sorts of things.
And the lead for City Hall, is that something that needs to be recertified every?
I think we got our recertification in either early 2021 or late 2020. Don't quote me on that, I can find out.
Okay, so it's kind of a, every, every several years you have to, to pay attention and make sure we're still up to par. Excellent, thank you.
Another comment, council member.
Thank you. Are we still in questions?
Questions are okay.
Okay, thank you. I just have a brief question with regard to the Waldron and maybe even BCT is, and I'm sure ESD is involved. Again, good teamwork stuff here, but would your role with those projects, if anything at all, still be under the umbrella of advising and maybe contract management?
Yeah, so I can speak specifically to where we're at with the Waldron. You know, JD and his team have definitely been intimately involved with the group that did the task force report for the Waldron and such, and now are in the process based on the mayor's announcements a few months ago of all the improvements to the building. They are the, the division that's managing all of those contracts. So that'll be to manage the HVAC improvements, to manage the mason re-reparers on the Waldron, the window restorations and like the lighting upgrades and other things like that. So absolutely JD and his, JD in particular, and his team are managing all aspects of that in conjunction, you know, in coordination with ESD and the mayor's office and others. As far as the BCT, less involvement there. I know Parks has their role and there's lots of conversations about, you know, both facilities, but heavily, heavily involved in the Waldron projects right now.
Thank you and good luck.
I'm not sure where that came from. Any other question? Comments from council members on the facilities budget? Okay, no waving hands. Let's do a do pass recommendation on the facilities budget. I will call the role, council member of Scandalery.
Yes.
Council member Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Council member Smith?
Yes.
Council member Rallo?
Yes.
Council member Sandberg?
Yes.
Council member Flaherty?
Yes.
Council member Sim?
Yes.
Council member Volan?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, so our recommendation is yes, 900. Next up, we have fleet maintenance and Mr. Wason, feel free to share your screen when you're ready.
There we go. All right, Adam Wason again, on behalf of Jason Spear, the Fleet Maintenance Division. I don't say this lightly, when I consider fleet maintenance to honestly be the backbone of many of the services that the City of Bloomington offers. There we go. The amount of talent and effort it takes to keep the City of Bloomington's wide-ranging fleet of vehicles and pieces of equipment well-maintained and operational is something that never ceases to amaze me. The skills that this team possesses is truly remarkable and it's often the, some of the unheralded work when we think about city operations. You know, whether making carburetor adjustments to a two-stroke piece of landscaping equipment, to overhauling a hydraulic system on a quarter million dollar plus sanitation truck or repairing the transmission on a triaxle, the team at Fleet Maintenance literally can do it all. I have some of the most, actually, I think it's fair to say that some of the most creative things I've seen in city operations have occurred at Fleet Maintenance with the resiliency and resourcefulness of the team down there. Overall, 10 FTEs, they oversee not only vehicle upkeep and maintenance, but two fueling stations and then a new mobile repair unit. This is another division where using technology to improve asset management as well as service delivery to the employees across the organization has been an important effort. This is again, us using our Lucidity program for asset management at Fleet. I talked about the mobile service unit. Here's a neat, well, the picture kind of shows it all, but this is a preventative maintenance mobile unit where we can go do off-site oil changes and preventative maintenance on city vehicles. So, you know, you can think of it from the perspective of the water treatment plant operator at Monroe not needing to bring in, you know, a vehicle that's used on site down there for, all the way to fleet maintenance where we can go to them and do several vehicles onsite in a really efficient manner. So that's one new and important program we've launched this year. You know, so what's the difference between preventative and routine maintenance, you might ask? Well, we look at routine or preventative maintenance as being the, the types of things related to changing of fluids, changing oil, belt hoses and performing maintenance on tires such as rotations or like a broke brake rotor balancing. Routine maintenance then is more of things like full tire changes, changing out brake pads and rotors, et cetera. So slight differences in what the preventative versus the routine is. You know, one goal that we're always trying to meet is to reduce our annual emergency callouts and one of the best ways you can do that is by having vehicles that are newer and of good repair. We've done a great job at replacing capital these last several years and that's made significant impacts in our overall emergency callouts. We've been actively improving our asset management, our inventory management system through our asset management system. So our asset management system has an inventory management component and that effort has been ongoing this year to better track the inventory of all the parts and supplies we need to make all the repairs and do all the maintenance that we do. Some other 2021 budget goal updates, you know, we've had some budget impacts that have put some of our projects on hold, but we're still moving forward with some other major initiatives. The car and truck wash that's been funded over the last couple of years is operational and something that, you know, it may sound insignificant, but in reality, just that car wash, car and truck wash station can add years of life to some of our vehicles. He'd be amazed and maybe not amazed, but I was amazed and shocked when I saw what salt can do to the body of a dump truck over a couple of years of not adequately washing it. So the new car and truck wash down at the Miller Drive location, it's getting heavy usage, which is exactly what we want. We can drive everything from the new Chevy bolts through it to, you know, our largest fire truck. So, so a major investment that's going to go a long way to the overall condition of our fleet over time. So additional 2021 updates and another major breakthrough with our asset management efforts is directly related to the vehicle points analysis. I'm not sure if you council members remember, but I've talked about this a lot in the past. We used to have a very antiquated system of managing all of the data that goes into knowing the condition of all of the vehicles across the entire city. So this is the, you know, the vehicle year, the make, the model, the VIN, the mileage, the fuel usage, the maintenance history, the parts history, which is all, you know, put into a formula to determine the overall condition of vehicle. With our new asset management program instead of spending months each year updating all that information in a gigantic Excel spreadsheet, we are now in the position to be able to print a report and it is really great to be able to say that out loud. In terms of 2022 budget goals and in our preventative maintenance area, they're quite similar to what they've been in the years past. We want to try to, we want to do everything we can to meet the best management practices and the standards for preventative and routine maintenance based on the vehicle type and vehicle usage. So that's always our goal. You know, that's going to be at least 45 PMs per month and looking to do the five oil changes per day offsite with the mobile unit that we talked about. Again, we always want to just be reducing the number of emergency callouts, but it's another good example of how so many of the functions in Public Works are 24/7 type operations. If we get a call in the middle of the night that we've got a fire truck down, we're going to be responding. You know, if we've gotten a call that we've got a major snowstorm coming, we're going to be there 24/7 assisting as we need. And it's part of what, just part of what we do. In terms of our fuel service for all the different departments, you've seen some notes about trapping, tracking DEF usage. This is the diesel exhaust component additive to lessen the environmental impacts. And so making some efforts to better track that across the various departments of the city. And then also adding some, you know, it may seem minor, but something that I know staff will appreciate, but adding some tire inflation stations and a vacuum station at our fueling sites, allow staff to vacuum out the vehicle assigned to them. And instead of having to go to the fleet maintenance garage to check tire pressure and add a little air, we'll have those added to our vehicle fueling sites for staff to use in the future. Again, may seem minor, but I think it'll just be a nice little addition for staff and for fleet. You know, as we talked about earlier, the inventory management, we're going to continue moving those efforts forward. And this is just another technology improvement that we're doing to maintain an accurate inventory of our parts. The automation and tracking of these with, you know, barcodes and, you know, complete system. Got a new employee there, Corey, that's really taken this task on and doing great work there. Again, just the vehicle points analysis and talking about what we do there. But and, and another topic that we're, we're actively talking about and actively working with other city staff is working with Lauren Travis and the sustainability team and reviewing all of our vehicle purchases. We're adding more fully electric vehicles each year with new vehicle purchases. You know, parking enforcement's been a good example. We're trying to get all their vehicles to be hybrid and electric for their efforts and making that something that's priority across the city. So I'm looking forward to the day when we can consider alternative fuel technologies for things beyond just the single passenger vehicles. You know, right now we're limited to the, you know, the Chevy bolts, bolts, et cetera, for the all electrics and, you know, the fuel, the gas, electric hybrids and things. But, you know, the vast majority of what we utilize as a city for our operations are the larger trucks, are the dump trucks, are the sanitation vehicles and all those sorts of things. And, you know, really looking forward to when some of those technologies start hitting the larger vehicle classes as well. Just overall budget highlights, again, this is a pretty steady year over year. No major, no major increases or decreases across the board. Total budget request is just over 3.7, just under 3.7 million. And you'll see in the summary chart, you know, almost 2 million of that is just supplies and parts. So, you know, personnel is absolutely a vital aspect of fleet maintenance and all that, but the vast majority, they're, you know, a significant, nearly a majority of all of our spending there, just over half of our spending there is related to the parts and supplies that are necessary to make those repairs and do the maintenance. Happy to answer any questions about fleet maintenance. Thanks to Jason Spear and the whole team down there for their fantastic efforts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wason. We will now go to council for questions. Any council member questions? Council member Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I wanted to ask about two-stroke engine equipment versus electric equipment. I don't, I don't know if fleet is just in charge of maintenance or if they would have any input into the type of equipment that is purchased, but obviously there are lots of environmental costs when you're talking about two-stroke engines. And I wonder if we're moving to electric as we heard from Parks last night.
You know, maybe not the best example I could have brought up, but, you know, in a lot of cases we are. I know Parks and facilities have been looking to, you know, as a leaf blower needs replaced to go to more electric and things like that. I guess my point was just to point out the talents of the variety of things that they repair. But, you know, Public Works and Parks have been looking at more electrification of, of those, I guess, kind of landscaping tool type things. Fleet maintenance doesn't get actively involved in those purchasing decisions, but departments certainly do. So Parks, Public Works, et cetera. So, and I know that's something we're actively looking to switch out as we need to replace equipment.
Okay. And then related to that, do you know how much of the city's fleet of vehicles is electric or hybrid?
We can get to that info. Again, you know, the big limiting factor there is so much of what we need to do between street department utilities, parks, you know, often involve some of the larger, heavier duty trucks. One of the priorities of Public Works in general is identifying anywhere that doesn't need something like that, where we can go to an electric or go to a hybrid. Parking enforcement's a great example. When we, when parking enforcement moved into Public Works this year, we were working with the police department on vehicles and which ones they would keep, which ones we would keep, et cetera. And I looked at it as a great opportunity to make sure where some of the SUVs parking may have used in the past, provided a great opportunity to go to fully electric. So it's constantly a focus. I can get you the full, the total numbers of hybrids and electrics based on vehicle type. But again, you know, with as many pickup trucks and, you know, dump trucks. dump trucks and all those sorts of things in our, that make up the vast majority of our assets. It's, it's been somewhat limited, but whenever we can, that is our focus.
Thank you.
I will say I was really excited to see the Ford F-150 demos. I would happily be an agency that buys 20 of the first ones that come off the line. But I think that's going to be a pretty long waitlist.
Other question? Council member Flaherty?
Thanks. Thanks for that information. I wanted to follow up on some of the same. And yeah, I would appreciate it as well. A, a list of our fleet overall and perhaps by vehicle type or category and where we are with regard to replacement. I also appreciate the efforts at right sizing vehicles that it always kind of blew my mind that we had SUVs doing parking enforcement. There are, well, at least three climate action plan policies on fleet maintenance and inventory in particular. Two of those are phase one policies. So one to three-year implementation timeline. Do you know offhand where we are on those? So one of those is establishing electric vehicle suitability and fleet optimization study. And that seems to be potentially expanding beyond the city's fleet. It's not 100% clear from the action. The other has to do with a policy to replace city fleet vehicles, buses with electric and hybrid at time of replacement. So how are we on the actual planning as opposed to just working with, say, Lauren, you know, when making those decisions?
I think it's, it's got to do exactly with what I've kind of been saying with my response to Councilmember Piedmont Smith and others is whenever we have an opportunity to replace a vehicle that doesn't require a heavy duty or a technology that doesn't have a hybrid or electric. That's what we're, that's what we're doing, especially in public works and in coordination with parks and others. So, you know, I think our actions kind of speak for what we're doing there and, and we'll continue to do. A, the most limiting factor, and I think Lou May is a good example, you know, Lou's looking to, you know, purchase more electric hybrid buses and is doing a great job there. What we're finding is that, you know, for, you know, we need, we need 30 some odd heavy duty dump trucks and tri axles to be able to do snow control. There are no alternative technologies there. You know, they're outside of maybe CNG and whether or not that's an upgrade or whatnot could be debated. So we're always looking at that as part of our purchasing priority. Whenever there is an alternate to a plain gas or diesel, we're certainly exploring it. And we know those come at higher initial upfront costs and lower, you know, operating costs. So I guess that's my, that's how we're trying to implement that citywide.
Is it 100% at this point? If the, if the vehicle is available as an electric vehicle, it's automatic, we replace it with electric? Or is it a case by case basis? So?
I wouldn't say that it's a hard and fast policy. I know. No, I wouldn't say it's a hard and fast policy. I think it comes down to the specific need and uses. But again, for, I think parking enforcement's the perfect example. You know, it's very localized travel in the downtown area near charging stations. We can, you know, modify work schedules to make sure that if we're going to be low on the day for electric charge, we can do different things. And, and so, you know, that's been our focus. And again, we'll be happy to provide the breakdown of vehicle types across department and division and things like that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Other questions from council members?
I have one that I wanted to follow up on. Mr. Wason, has your department been able to consider a pilot program to clear snow from sidewalks in areas of high pedestrian traffic? I know it's hard and it's, you know, owner responsibility, but of course most or a lot of owners don't, or a lot of owners don't live here and don't plan for that. And, you know, it's really needed in places, especially with that high pedestrian traffic. And then in places where people, pedestrians end up walking in the street, which to me is just usually incredibly dangerous. So do we have anything in the fleet that could be used now? You know, things that we use to clear maybe multi-use paths or something to work on a pilot program for this?
Absolutely. I was going to address that in the street department presentation or street division presentation here. How many more we have in a couple of presentations, but I can start to address it now. Absolutely. We have Bobcats. We have some smaller pieces of equipment that we definitely use for those purposes. I can. We've been working hard over the last couple of weeks, or actually probably last week or so, since we've met with some council members to come up with a a map and a visual of all of the locations citywide where we actually are responsible for snow control from pedestrian facilities like sidewalks and side paths. So we've gotten that information on a map. We're currently translating that to linear feet and miles. I think the council and the public would be somewhat shocked and surprised by the amount of locations where that exists. But if you don't mind, I'll address that more in my street department or street division presentation.
Yeah, sorry for getting ahead. Sorry about that. The overlap. Okay. Thank you for that. Other question? If not for now, we can go to the public. If anyone would like to comment on the fleet maintenance budget from public work, please raise your hand. Mr. Lucas will let us know if anyone would like to comment.
I don't see any raised hands at the moment.
Okay, I think we can go back to council for any other questions, final comments on the fleet maintenance budget. Not seeing any. Let's consider a due pass recommendation on the fleet maintenance budget. I will call the one who I see first, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Stane?
Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
Councilmember Camblylory?
Yes.
Councilmember Sim?
Yes.
And I will be a yes as well. So we are eight zero one for the fleet maintenance budget. Thank you very much. And on to the next budget, we will move into parking services.
All right. I believe you can see my screen now. So being the newest division of public works, the parking services division is a combination of both parking enforcement and the parking facilities division, previous parking facilities division. This is headed up by parking services director, Michelle Wall, parking enforcement manager, Rayanne Cox, and parking facilities manager, Brian Daley. While not always the most well-received services of the city of Bloomington, the parking services division is responsible for enforcement activities, special event setup, parking garage management and maintenance, as well as managing the school crossing guard program. And when I joke that they may not always be the most well-received of city services, that's just in terms of they do issue parking tickets. The 25 full-time employees have been busy this past year and will be busy well into 2022. We reopened the replacement of the Park, Fourth Street parking garage just this week. And we opened the trades district garage just a couple of months ago. We've moved all permit sales to an online platform in the COVID area and are consistently reviewing programs and practices for identifying improvements now that all, now that almost all aspects of parking fall under one division within the city. Obviously, 2021 had impacts in many, many areas and on a lot of things. And one was usage of the parking garages. It was down, not to be unexpected during a worldwide pandemic and people working from home and such. And, you know, so we definitely didn't meet our operating goals of 85% occupancy. But one good thing to note is that we're, we've seen a rapid increase in usage of late and are excited to get back to a bit of normal with operations. We've learned a lot in the last few years and probably most importantly was the realization that we have to invest in the upkeep and maintenance of our facilities based on best management practices in order to realize the full potential life of a facility and beyond. We're proud to report that we're doing just that and we're making the necessary capital improvements and undertaking specified maintenance activities on a regular basis. Additional 2021 goals are, you know, in this case, done and done. With final touches, punch lists and art installations yet to come. We've got both of the, the replacement garage at Fourth Street Operational and the trades district garage operational. And one thing to note on the trades district garage, it's already been awarded a prestigious honor by the Indiana Chapter of the American Concrete Institute for the design and construction in their transportation category. You know, I often don't comment on how parking garages are actually visually appealing. But, you know, the way the trades district garage interacts within the showers district does work very well and won an award for just that. Additionally, the team at parking enforcement also plays a critical role in the upkeep and maintenance of the parking meter inventory. Ross, John and Justin do great work there. It's a daily, it's, it's worked daily to make sure all the meters are up and running and meeting our, our desire for less than 5% failure rates. For parking facilities, you know, we're starting to see a return, and this is moving now into 2022 budget goals, but we're starting to see a return of parkers in our facilities at high rates. Seeing a dramatic increase in permit purchases for all of our garages. And we're hoping to be back closer to that 85% occupancy here in the very near future at all of facilities. Additionally, with parking facilities, you know, we've got major capital related expenses and repairs for both Walnut and Morton garages. That includes the upgrade of cabs at the Walnut, elevator cabs at the Walnut Street Garage and as well as wayfinding signage improvements at Walnut Street amongst other maintenance and repair activities. For parking enforcement in 2022 goals, we'll be continuing our efforts just as we always have. We, you know, strive to, while striving to increase our positive resident interactions and provide high levels of customer service, we have strong plans for both specific customer service training as well as other opportunities for professional development and safety training for staff in the parking services division. Whilst, while this is one division where some significant changes appear to be an overall decrease in the budget, the majority of this is related to some one-time costs not being part of ongoing budgets in regards to the cost for the ParkSmart certifications as well as removing, as well as transferring some positions within the various funding categories based on where positions now actually report within the organization. For, for, for the Alt-Trans 454 fund, this, the only major changes here from a public works perspective are again, are aligning some of the salaries in the new division. And then some of the new costs associated with both the trades district and Fourth Street Garage is coming back online, coming online. For the parking meter fund, seeing a major decrease due to the cellular upgrades that were completed in 2021. So this is the line 242 other supplies. That was a major project here that we've completed in 2021. And then again, some changes as far as aligning the personnel costs in the division. As for a budget summary, total request for parking services is $4.757 million in 2021. I'm happy to try to answer any and all of your questions and have some additional staff that can assist as needed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wason. We will now enter some questions from council. Let me see who we have here. Okay, Councilmember Volan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wason, for the presentation. A few short questions. First, I think I asked this the other night, but maybe you have a better answer. Do you plan to have signs outside the two new garages saying how many spaces are available at any given moment?
I can check back. I don't know that that's part of the sign package, council member.
That's disappointing. Secondly, parking and sanitation are two of your divisions that actually have significant revenues from user fees and the like. Can you tell us what the revenue was of parking or what is the expected revenue of parking? How do you account for that?
Could you be a little more specific?
Well, I mean, what portion of the expenses for parking services will be offset by user fees?
In 2022, it's hard to judge right now. You know, I would hope that the increases in parking permits and garage spaces will offset some of those, will offset the expenses, but it's still yet to be somewhat determined. You know, the impacts of COVID are still ongoing. We, like I said, we're seeing an increase in usage, but I'd be lying to you if I told you I had specific projections on what we absolutely expect for those revenues right now. We have hopes.
Sure, understood. I mean, before the pandemic, you did certainly have certain expectations of, I mean, in other words, let me put it another way. Do you, when you are budgeting for parking services, do you concern yourself at all with revenues or only concerned with expenses because you have to operate it no matter what?
Oh, no, absolutely. We're absolutely concerned with revenues. Again, you know, this last year and a half has been different than previously. So, and, and, you know, council member Volan, I'll also kind of claim some newness here with parking services just coming into public works. You know, I know we've worked, I worked for many years and closely with Ryan on, you know, some of his revenue projections. Those were more stable in those years in terms of how we projected out the revenues for the garages. So, you know, happy to, and, you know, I know Michelle and the team talk with you rather often on parking things, but
Yes, that's true.
Happy to kind of, you know, walk through what we are trying to project and how that might align with expenses and walk you through that in a little more detail.
Thank you. Okay, that's enough for now. I've got two more questions that I can hold them. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, Mr. Wason, for the presentation. The first floor commercial space in the Fourth Street Garage, how is that managed? Who will do it?
So it's still being marketed and I'm at a loss for words here. I apologize, council member. It's still being, we have a realtor on contract who's marketing the property in term, in the hopes that we sign a tenant and would be managed through that property management contract. Mr. Underwood, feel free to jump in if I screwed that up at all.
Good evening, council. Jeff Underwood, City Controller. Yes, Chris Cockrum is the Realtor for the Fourth Street Garage and is actively marketing those properties for us. And then we're also looking collectively as we lease spaces that we would probably bring on a unified property management firm to manage all the city-owned properties where we have retailer commercial for those.
Mr. Underwood, would the revenues accrued from those rentals, would they, would they go to parking services?
No, those, if the properties are owned by the RDC, they would go back to the RDC for, to offset expenses they have for maintaining properties.
Okay. Mr. Wason, is, do you happen to know, have all of the features that we were, were described initially with, you know, charging stations and various feature, green features, have they been implemented in both garages? The trades district and the other, in Fourth Street?
All, all of those agreed upon function, all of those agreed upon aspects of the garage are absolutely still part of both garages. And with trades district, you know, the EV station or the EV charging stations are all installed and operational, the solar is installed. with Trades District, you know, the EV station or the EV charging stations are all installed and operational, the solar is installed. Yeah, the bike lockers, et cetera, all their functional installed and absolutely. So all agreed upon features with the council are being implemented at both garages. With Fourth Street, you know, our main goal was to get that garage open for parking as quickly as possible, knowing students were returning. So we still have to, I think next weekend, we'll be closing the lane of walnut so we can get a crane in there to lift the solar panels to the top floor. The EV charging station, the electrician for that is a different contract than the overall electrician for the whole garage. Those will be coming in in the next couple of weeks to being installed, so.
How about the bathrooms?
Yes, bathrooms. There will, everything that's been agreed to will still be part of that. The bathrooms at Fourth Street are not current, they're not open yet, there, those are being finished as well. But yes, absolutely. Everything that's been agreed to will be part of those garages.
True.
Absolutely.
Other question, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, thank you for yet another presentation. I had a question about neighborhood parking permit programs that definitely has at least some level of revenue impact as well as equity impacts. So neighborhood parking zones tend to be in some of our older and more historic neighborhoods. These neighborhoods are also the ones that are full of small-scale multifamily like duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes. There's dozens of these structures within a few blocks of my home, for instance. Unfortunately, all of the occupants of these homes are prohibited from purchasing neighborhood parking permits. And on top of that, many of our zones are underutilized. I think the one in the Near West Side, for instance, is like 10 or 15% capacity based on the traffic counts that your team does in this division. So we have excess capacity in many places and an inequitable system that basically harms a group of people who would generally be lower income since multifamily housing is more affordable. And I'm wondering if there are plans to rectify that policy coming from the Parking Services Team and hopefully raise some revenue in the process.
Well, you packed a lot into that one, so I don't know that I have just one specific answer. There is a lot of different topics addressed in that question. You know, again, Parking Services is new to Public Works. I know there's a Parking Commission that takes up all sorts of different topics when it comes to Parking. Michelle and her team work closely with the team in planning and transportation and staffing that commission. So I think any of the recommendations for such things would come from there. And, but otherwise, I don't, that, I don't have an answer to the overall, you know, how we would approach that at this time.
Okay, thank you. I think most, in my experience, most legislative recommendations do come from the administration, so I think it would be good to come from there maybe, but I'll follow up and writing about that. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I wanted to circle back to the question that Councilmember Volan had about revenues paying for Parking Services. It looks like from your budget memo that you are expecting $681,552 of TIF funds to support Parking Services. So is that, can I interpret that to basically be the subsidy to cover, that covers what we do not pay for with revenues?
I don't know that I'm fully qualified to answer that one on my own. Mr. Underwood is already appearing back on the screen like a little genie there.
Yeah, I can answer that question for you. TIF revenues only pay for garage bond payments and leases. They do not pay for any operational costs at the garages or the lots or for parking meters, so. Those funds, so Alt-Trans Parking Facilities and Parking Meter have to pay for their expenses out of revenues deposited into those accounts, which again would only be for fees, fines and so on.
But part of the budget for Parking Services comes from the general fund, over $2 million. So is, can we consider that a subsidy? I'm just trying to understand how much parking pays for itself and how much we are basically subsidizing it.
I think when it says general fund, it's got the fund number next to that. There's no subsidy coming directly from the city's general fund into the Parking Services. The only subsidy out of the general fund is into sanitation. And we budget, I believe, about $1.6 million. They will show that when they come to sanitation and then we use those funds to balance out the sanitation account at the end of the year.
Okay, so it's not, it's actually Fund 452. So where does that money come from?
That money's all fees, fines and permits. That, I believe, 452 is Parking Facilities. I think 454 is Parking Meter if I.
Yes, you're right, Jeff. You are. 452 is Parking Facilities and 452. Exactly.
And then, yeah, so the, the neighborhood permits are paid for and funded through Alt-Trans. So any of the neighborhood permits, monies and fines written in those zones go in that fund and are part of the revenues that fund the expenses for that. And then Parking Meters, it's all Parking Meter revenues. Go into that fund and pay the expenses and then Parking Facilities, which are the garages and the lots, are permits and fees. And then the bond payments and lease payments are out of the TIF revenues.
All right, my time is up. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, are there any more first round questions here? I have one that comes from a reveal and is just related to what is the discussion right now.
Sorry?
Are you like following up on what's happening right now?
Well, I did want to say that I thought 452 was the garage fund and 101 was the general fund. But on the slide that Mr. Weason presented, it says General Fund 452 on the one slide, so I'm not sure what that means, but that's been my understanding all along, is that 452 is the garage fund, 454 is the Neighborhood Zones Fund, 455 is the meters fund. And 101 is general fund.
Yeah, 101 is the general fund. It's just a mislabel on, on that particular.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, I will ask a first round question. The goal of having the parking garage is 85% full. It's difficult for me to see that as a goal because, you know, I think a city goal is also to decrease in the occupancy vehicles, especially in the downtown, so. Does, does that Public Works goal go toward any of the goals in, in the comprehensive plan or, or the climate action plan or the transportation plan?
I think that goal of 85% occupancy of a parking ground and garage in the downtown area is to stimulate the economy, to have workers parking that are going to be parking for long extended periods of time to go to work, keep them off the street. I think the 85% occupancy is so that we can meet the revenue goals so that we don't offer as much of a subsidy. But to try to, to equate that to the Climate Action Plan or other things, you know, I I think they need to be looked at somewhat separately, but at the same time, we're, we need, we, we are providing parking in the downtown for all of those reasons and I think if we set our occupancy goals at lower levels, it would go against what we're trying to do to operate the garages, so. I, I think it's probably safe to say that type of question is a catch 22.
I know it's not an easy question. I apologize for that. I know it, I know it's difficult. I mean, it, because it is also to me, I want the parking garages to pay for themselves, but I also don't think they should all exist, so it's difficult. Right, I mean, I mean, I guess that the follow-up there is, do we, are we planning to do an adjustment to parking rates? So that they more reflect market rates? Is that possible when we have so many empty spots in the garages?
I mean, empty spots in the garage, those aren't the goal in terms of, outside of what we're dealing right now with COVID. And I would say that, you know, the, the prices of permits have gone up. The council updated those, those pricing structures a year and a half ago, two years, you know, so they have been up, adjusted upwards to try to better reflect the cost of the Parking Service that's provided, so. I guess that, you know, it is something that's, that's been done in the recent past. But, yeah, I guess that's my response.
Okay, thank you. Second round questions, I think, once you two are both second round. Any other first rounds? Okay, Councilmember Volan.
Thank you, yes. To follow up on this, so, Mr. Weason, I'm not quite so concerned about the, well, I mean, the question that Councilmember Rosenbarger asked is of interest to me too, the 85% occupancy statement. My question is more, how are you going to ma, maintain 85% occupancy when you don't have the authority to change prices according to demand in, say, the garages? I mean, how, how do you, and how do you maintain, I mean, like, unless you change prices, you can't, you can't really encourage more people to come because it's cheaper or discourage people from coming because it's more expensive. What do you say to that?
It's, I think, absolutely a function of demand. It's a function of, you know, we're seeing, well, I mean, I know Ryan's on here. If Ryan, you want to jump in and talk about permit sales of late, you know, we're sold out.
That, let me, let me actually ask first, how is occupancy in the new Fourth Street Garage this week?
It just opened on Monday.
Is there any preliminary number? Is Mr. Daly is on the call? It'd be.
Actually, Ryan, I'm going to handle that one. It's way too soon to tell. It's, we've had, you know, a couple dozen cars in there at a time, but we literally just opened the facility on Monday, so I don't think any data points on, on the Fourth Street Garage are relevant at this point.
I would, I would respectfully disagree with you. You know, if, for no other reason than that, it's nice, it would be nice to know how the local economy is changing. Like if the garage is full or if it's empty, I'd be curious to know.
Oh, I think absolutely. I don't disagree with that, but I think, you know, four days into its operation isn't the time to start comparing data points.
With all due respect, Mr. Weason, this garage was the subject of a great deal of debate.
Fair enough.
Okay, and, you know, I think it's actually quite relevant and.
Like you said, you can, we can agree to disagree on that. We're four days into its operation.
So I'll go back to the original question. How do you get to 85% up or down without being able to adjust prices? I know it's a function of demand, but you can change demand through pricing. Is there some other way to do it that you have in mind?
Hopefully COVID, the impacts of COVID are, are, would begin to reduce, but I think your question is somewhat rhetorical there, Councilmember.
No, on the contrary, it's if, if we gave you the permission to adjust prices, would you find it useful?
I don't think I would, I mean, there's no other, I can't think of any other city fee or cost that staff has the sole authority to change that. You know, I think with sanitation rates or other things, you know, we either at least have to go back to the Board of Public Works for an adjustment, or if we want to go outside of a range. You know, I think if, I think if it came to something similar to that, we would be interested.
We can discuss this later. Thank you for the answers. Thank you. We're out of time.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty was next, and then Councilmember Rallo, you feel free to just jump in right after him.
It's sort of related. I wanted to ask, as these garages get underway and we see kind of what the occupancy levels are, what are your thoughts about converting surface lots? And I've talked to the mayor about this over time. You know, part of his justification or reasoning for the parking garages, despite the massive subsidies, is that I believe, you know, that's the last parking that we should remove in the city, not, you know, that we should concentrate it in, in the denser downtown, which means that we could get rid of service parking lots now that we've potentially built so much more structured parking. One way to control how, you know, that 85% rate you're aiming for and how many people are using it is if it's being underutilized, closing surface lots and using them for another purpose. And the best one that I've thought of is donating them to the Community Land Trust that is being formed. Has any discussion like that happened? And what are your thoughts about closing surface lots to impact usage of structured parking that the city has invested in?
Again, that's a multifaceted question. Absolutely, you know, so and some of it goes well beyond just the role of Public Works in parking management in terms of administrative priorities and things like you mentioned. So I won't opine on my personal opinions of converting, or my opinions of converting surface slots to other usages, as you've mentioned. You know, if there are higher and better usages and demand, the supply of spaces in the garages withstanding the demand and there's opportunity to move, you know, my, my take on parking garages and, you know, the philosophy that we, I think as a city have always embraced, including the council, is that we want to move our longer-term parkers off the street into the parking garages. You know, it's the downtown worker, the person that's going to be spending, you know, six, eight hours in the downtown compared to an hour or two in a park, a surface spot on the street. So I think it's a function of that in a way, but as far as, you know, the philosophy of the administration of turning over surface lots for other uses, like you've talked about, I'd defer to the, to the mayor and his team, to, you know, the administration there.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Well, that's, this is an intriguing conversation. Councilmember Flaherty, that was, of course, one of the reasons why the Fourth Street Garage was replaced was, and expanded a bit, was because the surface area of parking lots are very valuable property and we want those to be developed for commercial or residential purposes. So, and it seems to me that if you want to maximize occupancy of the, of the parking garage, which we, we want to, you know, the, one way to do it would be to limit the surface parking, parking lots. Therefore, making the option of either on street or optimally in garages, the option. But I had a question actually for Councilmember Volan, because he, he started on a, a point that I think is intriguing, and that is, Councilmember Volan, you're, you're, you're on the Parking Commission, seems that to optimize Parking, you want about 85% or something occupancy of street parking? So that would, that would apply for the parking garage. And so would, would you be interested in changing rates in order to maximize the occupancy of the Fourth Street Garage on that basis?
I wouldn't have asked the question if I didn't think it was the kind of tool that would, that would give Mr. Weason and his staff exactly the, it's, it's a tool that they would need in order to be able to adjust parking. The problem is that the 85 to 90% figure that shoot sites is for street parking. And Mr. Weason will point out, you know, logically that there's a lot of permit parking in the garage. Those rates are harder to adjust. Many people are buying permits on a yearly basis, like they do in the neighborhoods. So there's a challenge to adjusting prices there, but, I mean, right now, they simply don't have the tools to adjust prices. And I'll remind you that this council, six years ago, when I proposed differing prices on the street for underutilized blocks, the council rejected it on the argument that it was too complicated. I think that time has long since passed and that we need to get more complicated in our downtown.
Well, thank you for that answer. I'm all in favor of proper pricing to maximize the, you know, the use, since it's limited. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Any questions from Mr. Weason? Okay, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
To what extent does the city currently subsidize structured parking? In other words, on an annual basis, what are the typical, in other words, non-pandemic revenues? As well as the typical operations, maintenance and debt service costs? I'm reading this because this is a question we submitted on July 1st to the mayor's administration and I have yet to receive an answer. Is it possible to receive an answer this evening?
Mr. Wayson, you're muted.
I don't have that in front of me, Councilmember.
Does Mr. Underwood perhaps have those figures? Or I see Mr. Griffin has appeared on screen.
I thought we did say we were going to work on those numbers for you, if they're, if they actually exist, right? Didn't we say that? It's rather complicated.
I can say that the, the presented, the operating costs of the various facilities, parking meter, and neighborhood parking. So those are the, those are the operating budgets of those, the debt service numbers we can get for you and provide those.
All right. I hope to have that information within the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Sometimes I mute myself right when I'm talking. Any other questions for Mr. Wayson or city staff on parking services? Any around five, one to five? I don't know what we're on anymore. So, okay, no hands right now. Let's go to the public, see if we have any folks who would like to comment on the parking services budget. Mr. Lucas, if you see anyone, let us know. They all have two minutes.
Yes. First up is Greg Alexander.
Hi, thanks. My name is Greg Alexander. In a few weeks, I might be ready to deliver a preliminary report on usage patterns in the two new garages, or maybe I should say vacancy patterns. We'll see, right? But for now, I just want to ask, will the administration ever clearly tell the council which revenue streams are funding our parking garages? When the new garages were approved, the administration told the council that parking fee revenue would pay their debt service. Are we ever going to find out the whole and accurate picture there? I'm sorry that I haven't been able to divine these figures from any of the documents I've seen so far, given the dozens of hours I've spent counting cars and garages. I really feel like I should have also put in the effort to find out where the money is coming from. It's an important part of the story, and you guys have relied on me to tell you parking numbers, and I have let you down. I'm honestly ashamed that I haven't done it. I always have the feeling that if I just sat down to it and put in the hours, I would be able to make sense of information, like in the answers that you just heard from the controller. And I simply haven't done that. Seriously, I've been reciting parking numbers at the council podium for more than a decade, and I haven't once told you guys where the money comes from. I'm disappointed in myself. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Mr. Lucas, is there anyone else who would like to comment?
Not that I see at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome back to council for final, if you have any questions, that's fine as well, or, you know, final comments. Also here on parking services, if anyone has a comment they would like to make. Okay, no hands up. Three, two, one, Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. Just a few final comments. Sorry, just trying to locate where I am in my notes. I'll be abstaining on this budget tonight. I'm still trying to work on getting more information, certainly from that July. One question is just, we spend a lot of money on this, and it's really hard to know how we're doing vis-à-vis our goals and priorities when we don't have the answers to these questions. So I'll be waiting on that and following up with, with questions on some of those things. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comment? Councilmember Volan?
Yeah, just briefly, I may, I'm not as antagonistic towards this budget as I might seem. I mean, I will be voting no on it, but only for the fact that, if there's, if there's one objection I have, and it's the strongest objection I can, I can have, it's, I do not appreciate having data withheld. And, you know, I know that Mr. Wayson is concerned about judging the garage performance from the first three days, but it's relevant knowledge. What I think is a more general tone that I detect, one that I think Councilmember Rallo shares to some extent, is what is the purpose of structured parking? And for, I think, both Councilmember Rallo, who moved to bring back the Four Street Garage in 2019, when we had voted it down initially, and for the administration, the function, the primary function of the garage is economic development. And while I understand why they would think that, you know, the, the problem with saying it that easily is, it's at the expense of all of our other plans. If you put its economic development significance above anything else, then what point is there to have a transportation plan? What point is there to have a comprehensive plan? Several of the points in the comprehensive plan that call for the garage should be part of a, of a properly balanced transportation breakfast. Okay, so what I object to is sort of the attitude that, and again, it's, it's not Mr. Wayson's fault, per se. Mr. Wayson is playing defense. He's responsible mostly for the expenses, regardless of what the revenues are. He made that, that was a good point that he made. But overall, the administration's attitude towards these garages, I mean, they fought very strongly for the Four Street Garage and the Trade District Garage. And we found here that now that, you know, we don't, we can't get the data, you know, for this or that, you know, what, what matters is that they're, that they exist, so that they can provide some unspecified economic development. Well, I mean, it'd be nice to know right now if the several hundred people who apparently bought permits in the Four Street Garage are using them. That's not an indication that the garage should or shouldn't exist, but it's an indication of the economic temperature right now. So, you know, I'm very disappointed to hear that we can't even hear what scraps of knowledge there are. I wasn't going to judge it too harshly. I just want to know, I mean, I'm concerned for our economy in the wake of pandemic. But I would urge the administration to be more, more forthcoming with this kind of information. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, I thought, okay, Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you. Well, I'm, I agree with much of what Councilmember Volan says. I, it was for economic development. It was a replacement garage for one that was literally falling apart. And although the, it could be shored up with a certain cost, there was also an unknown factor of whether or not it would have to be closed intermittently, because no one could guess if pieces were falling off or not. That made it really completely inviable. And since it was a replacement garage, many of the merchants and commercial, the businesses downtown were, were quite emphatic about having it replaced. In fact, there were indications that they might move out. So the compactness of a city matters, compact urban form matters. Having large surface parking lots is a foolish way to design a city. Fact is, cars exist, and people will continue using them. Does that mean that we shouldn't follow our transportation plan, traffic demand management? Of course not. Those are not mutually exclusive. We can invest in, in buses, you know, alternative transportation, et cetera, even as we have a parking garage. So, but I'm intrigued by this idea of, of proper pricing. I think that's a very good way in order to maximize the facility. And so we'd fall in the council, and I hope that as data comes, and I think that Mr. Wayson's correct, that, I mean, after opening it for only four days, it's, you know, I guess we could have a baseline right now, but we really won't know for a while in terms of its total maximization. But based upon that, then we can adjust our rates to try to maximize it, because that's where we want to go. We want people to utilize the garage if they need to, but we also need to invest in other types of transportation. So anyway, it's, it's nuanced and complicated, but this has been a very good discussion. I appreciate Councilmember Volan's input on this.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, this has been an interesting discussion. So we're using significant TIF dollars to subsidize our parking garages. And there is an argument to be made that this is worthwhile for economic development, but I think we need to seriously consider using TIF to bond for pedestrian bicycle interest, infrastructure as well, to balance our investments in different types of infrastructure. And, you know, in the, in the, in the face of climate change, it's, it's imperative that we invest, that we not prioritize automobile infrastructure. I also feel like we should gradually be increasing the cost of parking, especially in our garages. So I think, you know, if the administration will, isn't going to bring that kind of legislation, then, then we should do it ourselves. And finally, I, I remain disappointed and frankly baffled that the financial information on parking revenues and subsidies is not something that the administration tracks without even being asked. I mean, it seems like something that as stewards of public funds, we should know, we should keep track of. So I, I really will need to see that information before I can vote yes on, on any budget from the mayor's office. So at this point, I cannot vote yes on this particular budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I, I will do a short one. I would just like to say that I will abstain from this budget. I, I think it, something that Councilmember Flaherty brought up in the beginning, I think it's pretty important that we at least expand the neighborhood parking permit program to folks in multifamily homes as well that live in those neighborhoods. I, I don't see a compelling reason not to do that. And so, and I think that most likely not really, in addition with any overhead. I mean, I guess there is some administrative work to issue those permits, but I, I hope that we could add that to this budget for 2022. That's it for me. Councilmember Volan, did you have? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like a rebuttal here. You know, Mr. Rallo justified his move to bring back the Fourth Street Garage, because he claimed that the cost of repair even is, as the, the costs of repair of the old garage increased, justified bringing, bringing the new garage. Well, it turned out that the cost of the new garage increased by more than the cost of repair did for the old garage. If you'd like to investigate those numbers, I'm happy to show them to him. But that argument simply was not enough reason to do, to take the action that he did. I'll also point out that he was on council in 2003, when the Seventh Street Garage was approved. And he should or would have been aware of the fact that the project called for council to raise rates at least every three years as a condition for approval. That's something that was only in the hands of council, but escalating rates for parking of any kind did not pass, did not get passed by this council until the passage of ordnance 1811. So a good 15 years later, we finally woke up and realized that we can't just have flat rates for parking. We had been subsidizing parking all that time, again, in the name of economic development. Cars exist, and that's true what Mr. Rallo says, the cars exist, but we don't have to be subsidizing them. That's why it's important to be thinking about not just escalating rates, variable rates, adjustable rates, you know, like the, that, I also share the concerns of my colleagues who are concerned about carbon footprint. We don't necessarily want to lower rates so much so that we can fill the garage. Okay, this is a difficult and moving problem, but it has to start with a recognition that our carbon footprint is an essential aspect of our economic development. And, you know, that, that car, the, the building of that garage could have gone to any number of other things. For that kind of money, we could have built out the unbilled sidewalk capacity of the city through a bond for the next 20 years worth of $300, $300,000 sidewalk budgets that we've been, you know, forced to deal with these trivial amounts every year that don't get all that unfunded sidewalk mandate built. What else could we have built with the money for that garage? I'll leave you all to think about it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Rallo, and then we'll try to wrap up the, the debate portion, I guess, of the.
Okay, I, I think I have to speak out, because Councilmember Volan has mischaracterized what I said. I explicitly said it wasn't just cost, but it was uncertainty, that there were parts of that Fourth Street Garage, the original one, that were falling off, and therefore had to be closed without warning. So there was no certainty involved in whether someone would buy a pass and be expected to be able to park in the garage. So that was a major consideration. Yes, we can always say, well, would money be better spent here or there? I would prefer that the commercial activity downtown be optimal, optimal, and not have businesses move to the periphery of the city, where you end up with more vehicle miles traveled, where you end up with large surface parking lots. And so it takes holistic thinking, I think, is the point of this. The, the parking garage was really a matter of thinking holistically about the community, business interests involved, and things like that. A narrow focus is, it's a bad idea, but it was much more nuanced and much more complicated than that. So I'll leave it at that. And, oh, one last thing. Yeah, you know, a fixed, flat rate, no, that's a bad idea. I think fixed increases, bad idea. I think we need to be more nimble than that. I think that maybe we could agree, we find a point of agreement, Councilmember Volan, that, you know, based upon things like the occupancy of a street optimizing for 85%. If it's not there, then what we do is we change the rate, as you proposed in the past, and we could do the same thing with parking garage in order to maximize the, the, the usage. I think that's the way we should go, is be more nimble and not fixed on one or the other. Thanks.
Thank you. Any council members want to weigh in on this? Okay. I think we're ready. Oh, Councilmember Sim?
Thank you. Just very, very quickly, I appreciate this debate and discussion this evening as well. And I think that's how you get to solutions, when you hear all sides of, of everyone's opinion, their position, bring facts, bring, you know, logic, bring sensible ideas. It is not that important to me to always be right, just that I'm listened to. Last thing I'll leave us all with, and just as my comments, there are compelling reasons not to do something, and many people hang their hat on that. There are also compelling reasons to do something, and others hang their hat on that. That is where collaboration and mutual discussion comes in. We've gotten some of that this evening, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member comments on parking services? Okay, that, I think we're ready for a do-pass recommendation on parking services. Call the roll, how I see it. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Jane.
Councilmember Volan?
No.
Councilmember Scambalory?
Jane.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
No.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And I will abstain. So for parking services, we have four, two, three. Does that sound good? Okay, and up next, we have sanitation with Mr. Wayson presenting. Please share your screen anytime. Tell me at first if you'd like.
Thanks for the reminder. And here we go. The sanitation division continues to be filled with a team of dedicated The sanitation division continues to be filled with a team of dedicated staff members who are up and working before some of the late night revelers have even headed home. Responsible for solid waste management, recycling pickup, large items, appliances and yard waste pickup, this team springs into action with all sorts of other activities when needed as well. Whether responding to illegal dumping, repairing a residence damaged cart, or managing the overall inventory of the 20, nearly 27,000 carts, this team stays busy year round. The 24 FTEs that make up the sanitation division are reporting to work by three, 4:30 each morning each day during any and all weather conditions. If you've thought about how hot it has been these last few days, these team members are facing the elements in all that they do. As a reminder, the sanitation division services all single family addresses of four or less units, all City of Bloomington facilities, as well as all pedestrian and park receptacles throughout the city. As has been a hot topic of discussion these last several years with sanitation, data is the key to success when it comes to service delivery. After one failed partnership and several years of work to get to the point where we now are, I'm proud to say that we, that individual and community wide usage data is being collected daily. I'll have more to share on the next slide. While getting the entire routeware system up and running throughout 2020 was a challenge, given COVID and all of its impacts, we're now at a point where benchmark data is being collected on users of our collection system. While this is just, while this slide is just very basic and high level snapshot of, of a summary of the data we're able to collect, we can also now drill down and utilize our data collection efforts to review individual household participation. Councilmember Volan, I know you've been long awaiting digging into this data, and our team is now ready to sit down and run you through the backend of the system that you've been so patiently waiting for. With recycling collection in particular, as part of our 2021 goals, what I can say is that the market and the industry is ever changing and challenging. We've increased our communication efforts on what clean recycling is and have even launched a new platform called Recollect, Recollect in 2021. This platform is a one stop shop for all things sanitation and recycling, and has been a great tool in putting information out, putting and pushing information out and pointing residents to the correct information on recycling and solid waste services offered by the city. Our municipal collection efforts are no small task. This includes every park, every downtown container and every, every city facility, whether it's BPD headquarters, one of the fire stations, one of the many parks facilities or city hall sanitation staff, complete regular pickups, with Switchyard Park being our most recent addition. Moving towards our 2022 goals, we're going to continue tweaking and improving what data we collect, how we collect it, and how we utilize it to inform decision making and communications to residents. We want to continue to use the technology and various communication platforms to not only improve our service delivery for such things as large item and additional pickups, but to also improve the quality of the recycling we, that we pick up and reduce the amount of organics in the solid waste stream. Continuing with some yard waste collection goals, it's a heavily utilized service from April to December. And we're closely partnering with the 1,000 households that mulch pilot program as we continue to promote the sale of yard waste carts and making the yard waste program easier for all users. The theme of no major increases also applies and continues with the sanitation division. Items of note here are that we do have higher insurance premiums year over year, from year to year, increased vehicle repair costs and increased disposal and processing costs for both solid waste and recycling. The overall budget request is three point, just under 3.1 million, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for that presentation. We will go to council for questions. Anybody have a question on sanitation budget? Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and then Councilmember Volan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wason. So I wanted to ask about pay as you throw, which was something that we, that some of us said we really wanted to see eventually in the new sanitation system back in 2017 when we first approved it. Now that data collection is underway, are we any closer to a system whereby the less people throw away in trash bin, the, the less they pay?
We're not currently moving towards a recommendation of pay as you throw. We are analyzing the data as it comes in. And, but at this time, no, we're not looking to push that, push a recommendation forward on that.
So are, are there other mechanisms that, that we could use to discourage people from throwing waste stuff? Which, as we all know, just goes to the landfill and is not good for the environment.
Well, I think what we offer right now is a, is a really good model, and we've actually been noted as being a very good model for just that, you know, by offering the three different sizes, which no, we, very few communities offer three sizes. By offering a lower per gallon rate of trash disposal for the smaller the size, you know, those are the, you know, those are the same things that from when we moved into this program, were meant to encourage just that. You know, if there are not cities that offer the 35 gallon in any, you know, there aren't many cities that do that. Just the fact that we do that is a huge push towards waste reduction, you know, and offering that at the about $6 a month cost is very cost effective. Well, it's a very, it, it's a low cost for a small amount of trash per month is what I'd say.
Well, but when we look at the old system where we had stickers and somebody who recycles a lot and doesn't create a lot of trash, you know, they could just not put out trash, you know, maybe once every five weeks they would put out trash and it would cost them $2. And now they're paying every week at least $6 or whatever it is for the smallest bin.
My comment there, my comment would be that I have had zero residents contact us in the last year plus requesting pay as you throw. If you look at the community survey, it's, it's one of the city services that's actually rated at above 80, I think it was 85% satisfaction with residents this past year. So it's just that we just haven't been hearing that. I think we have a high level of resident satisfaction with the current system, and it's a system that does encourage folks to produce less waste.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Volan, you were next, and then Councilmember Rallo, feel free to go right after that.
Yes, thanks. Mr. Wason, I'm very happy to hear that there is data available to be dug into. I do see a slide, I think it moved from the, you may have moved it between when you submitted it to Mr. Lucas and when you presented it, but I, I see a slide here. Recycling numbers for the first six months of this year and solid waste numbers. But the specific data I'm looking for is, do you have, do you have numbers about how often people put their bins out? Because they're chipped, they're RFI D-chipped.
Yep. So I apologize. We did make some modifications to that specific slide.
Yeah, I see it though.
So, yep, so I've, I've put that back up on the screen here. Yeah, so you can see here we're able to calculate the average number of pickups per account per month. And, and we can even dig further into the individual household level data as well. But this is just a high level average that you see here.
Well, what I don't see is the number of times that people put out bins.
Average number of pickups per account per month.
Okay, that's not in the chart that I see average monthly costs.
Okay.
I see average tons per truckload.
So again, Councilmember Volan, from the time that we made modifications to the chart to try to better.
All right, if you could send it, please, that would, I would appreciate it.
It's on this, I think I've shared my screen right now, if you can see my shared screen.
It's not that great. It's hard for me to see. If someone could email to me, that would be good.
I think we got the slide.
Let, let me use the rest of my time to ask another question if you all would. Mr. Wason, I, I would agree with you that the three sizes of bins are good. They may even be exemplary, but pay as you throw would be even better. It would be, it would give people even more incentive to recycle. Why wouldn't you be interested in pay as you throw?
Again, I think we have a system that's working very well. I think we have.
That's not really the question. Why, why?
Apologies.
I'm doing my, my apology. I interrupted you.
Yep, that's all right. I have nothing that I might, you know, I, I just stick by the points I was making earlier, Councilmember Volan. I, I think we've put together a very good system that other communities are looking to replicate because it's working well. You know, pay as you throw is not a system that's going to have any predictability to it. And we need to have a system with predictability when we're trying to service as many households as we are. That, that's, that's my professional opinion there. Can we do more to encourage less waste being produced? Absolutely. Are we offering a very good value for the service we're providing? Absolutely.
My time is up, but frankly, that as, as significant as the answer is, it didn't answer my question. Thank you.
Mr. Wason, could you, could you unshare your screen? I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. And then sorry, Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you. So, Mr. Wason, you know, don't, don't take my questions as being critical of what you're doing, because I've been very pleased that sanitation services and how well it's worked. And there was a lot of trepidation at first about how this would play out, but it's played out very, very well. And I guess the satisfaction numbers are, demonstrate that. So it looks like the disposal fees or the processing fees for the, the waste is about three times recycling. So, so I interpret. And then, and we're paying a single firm to haul it away. And after they haul it away, we really don't know what, what comes of that, do we? I mean, we don't know if recycling is recycled, or do we, do we know?
Yeah, actually, we do get, Hoosier Disposal and Republic Services offers reports on what goes through the materials recovery facility up in Indianapolis. You know, I've toured the facility, I think some council members have, and kind of seen the waste stream in action. So, you know, we are confident with our partnership there. You know, one thing, a couple of points I just make very quickly here is, you know, last year was the first year we paid, we had to pay to actually have our recycling process. That, the turmoil in the recycling market is something that has me as concerned as anything else. You know, how long will glass be accepted? How long will certain things like plastics that don't, you know, be accepted? So that, I, I have some major concerns there, but we're, we work very closely with our, our business reps over at Hoosier Disposal and Republic, so.
I understand there's a lot of volatility.
Yeah, absolutely. Just to the cost factor of processing, you know, we have, we collect about three times the amount of solid waste compared to recycling. The cost of a ton of trash for disposals, I think $28 this year, and I think processing recycling is around $50 a ton.
Has volume increased because of the pandemic?
Absolutely.
A lot of people are throwing stuff away just because they don't want to, oh, they're getting carryout food and so forth.
Yeah. Yes, our tonnages are definitely up in both trash and recycling.
Okay, hopefully that will decline as things normalize. Okay, thank you for feeling that. That's good news. I'm glad you followed up and you actually, you know, inspected. Kudos to you for that. And it's, you know, very good, you know, comforting to, to hear that. Thank you.
Other first wrong question? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wason, for, for all the presentations tonight. One of the Phase One Climate Action Plan actions is to create a pilot food scraps bag pilot program to test food scraps composting collection across restaurant, commercial and residential customer base where food scrap bags are separated at landfill without separate compost bins and collection vehicles. My understanding is that that would be food scrap bags that people put with their, put out with their trash. Is, is that accurate? My understanding of that recommendation, that program?
Quite honestly, Councilmember, I'm not sure of the specific, the exact specific of that recommendation.
Okay, so I take it there's no plans in the 2022 budget to implement that Phase One recommendation, is that right?
There is no plan to implement curbside, pilot curbside program. I can tell you all of the other things we've done in support of composting if you're interested.
Sure, go for it.
Yeah, you know, so in that, the Climate Action Plan, it's things like partner with the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District. And we've definitely been in lengthy conversations with their team and Green Camino and been big supporters of the rural drop off sites. You know, we did Public Works and the Board of Public Works approved Green Camino as a curbside composter. You know, that required city action and something we're very supportive of. We're also, ESD's been working closely on some business outreach efforts with, in regards to composting. And what I, I guess what I would note right now is that, you know, we're trying to have some impacts in other areas that don't require the additional curb pickup, you know, routes from sanitation. And I think we've had some success there. But no, we're not proposing a curbside program operated by the city for 2022.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for highlighting those other efforts. You're great. Thank you.
Oh, just one other thing to highlight there. We're also working closely with Green Camino on drop off locations at city facilities. I know we've already got a couple at parks. And then we're working with the 100, 1,000 households that mulch on some neighborhood opportunities as well. So really trying to be supportive of, of those efforts.
Great, thank you.
I have a first wrong question. I want to follow up on the composting. I know a lot of council members are interested in that. Is Green Camino or Earth Keepers, are they really the only option right now in the city for composting as a company?
I'm not aware of other companies, no, but there could quite possibly be.
Yeah. And I mean, maybe you don't know the answer to this. I don't know really, I guess, I mean, I'm just asking you in case, I think, but um, would they have the capacity to implement a pilot program with us for some commercial and residential?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Okay, I know, I mean, I know they're not a part of the city. So, okay. This is not exactly a question, but I, I was in Colorado a little bit during recess and something that a lot of cities do out there is they alternate the days that recycling and composting is picked up. So it's the same amount of people hours, but people just have mostly, well, families tend to have a bigger recycling bin then, and then it's yard waste compost one Tuesday, and then recycling the next, and trash is every week, which I think is a really, really great idea that I hadn't thought about until I experienced it, but um, I don't know, I don't, it's not really a question, like would, do you think we could potentially do something like that? Would it take different trucks? Or would it take, could it use the same truck?
So my general take on that would be seeing the recycling volumes we do and how many people try to, on a weekly basis, leave more recycling out of their cart than, you know, than we would pick up. I, I don't know how I'd feel. I, I would need, we would really need to dig deep into what, what residents felt about a reduction in, from weekly recycling as, as well as it's, as much as it's used and as well as it's received. If it were to alternate, would we need different trucks? I, I don't think so, but at the same time, I think it would just be a matter of probably dedicating specifically within the current fleet, but I'd have to dig deep in on that as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Volan?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify some data that you cited just now, Mr. Wason. Did I hear correctly that you said that solid waste tipping fees are currently $28 and recycling are $50?
Let me double check. I'd have to look.
Because $28 a ton was what the Monroe County landfill used to charge the city for tipping fees for solid waste in 2004.
I mean, I'm trying to pull up the agreement and get the exacts for you. I mean, I'm trying to pull up the agreement and get the exacts for you. I was.
Well, you're saying that recycling is almost twice as much as solid waste.
Correct.
Its costs.
Correct. That is, I'm comfortable with saying that.
But I mean, the last I knew, and maybe Councilmember Piedmont Smith can inform us, the negotiated fee per ton between the city and Republic Services, which is, does business under Hoosier, it's the same company, was on the order of $46 a ton. What's changed? They're still hauling trash all the way to Sycamore Ridge, 65 miles away.
I'm not, Council, I'm, I guess I don't really understand your question in terms of what's changed on our behalf. We have a separate contract with Hoosier Disposal that we pay for our, you know, that we pay our.
So you mean, again, you mean to tell me that whatever new contract we've signed in the past three or four years has reduced our costs at Hoosier Disposal's transfer station per ton of solid waste to $28?
It was, I believe, when we first entered into the agreement, it was like $26.90 a ton plus, you know, CPI type increases year over year. I'm trying to find that exact exhibit and I don't see it. Ah, shoot. Councilmember Rowland, we'll certainly provide you that exact, those exact figures.
It's, it's important, but I mean, the, the upshot, if this, if these numbers are correct, recycling is costing us a fortune. Is there, I mean, is the all in one program, like with, now that we know that plastic is all but worthless? You know, like, do we need to be rethinking the whole all in one program? What good is the recycling if it, if it's, if it can't be recycled, if we don't know what's in it?
What, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm running out of time. I'll have to ask it in another round.
Sure.
Are there any other councilmember questions? Councilmember Rallo.
I'm intrigued by Councilmember Rowland's question, so I hope, rephrase it, but we hope we get some answers. But regarding the composting, I think there's a lot of ways to approach it. And I know it's an important point because it consists, or did consist of 40% of our waste stream was, by weight, I think, was compostables. And that's a huge amount that needs to go somewhere else, needs to aerobically digest, doesn't need to go to landfill where it creates methane. So how we go about it, it seems very intriguing, but one way might be just to distribute composters to people so they can do it themselves. I mean, you know, of course, that comes with some risks because you've got to be careful about, you know, vermin. And so people need to do it right and they, they need to not have it exposed. But then again, putting out containers means putting out sealed containers because if they're all out in one night, that's a happy night for raccoons. So they, they, so anyway, I guess I'm just posing this as, Mr. Weason, have you talked about other approaches like, you know, distributing composters like the people who are doing the composting for leaves? Maybe, maybe we can distribute composters and cut down on the waste stream and cut down on greenhouse gases.
Absolutely. Yeah, I know. You know, I think that's, I think the whole approach to composting needs to be holistic in that regard, in my opinion. In terms of, you know, the more people that we can get to compost onsite in a, you know, neighborhood safe fashion is, is the ideal situation, you know. I, my, my wife and I have two different composters and we, you know, supplement our garden every year, you know, so that's the ideal situation. The, the other ideal situation is to remove as much of that 40% from the, the, you know, waste stream as possible. So I think it's a combination of all the things in terms of private partnership, you know, public, private partnerships, like we've done with Green Camino, doing compost bin distribution sales at very low costs. It's neighborhood composting facilities and drop offs. It's, you know, I, I think it's a combination of all of them. And, you know, especially if we're not at a point where we're making a leap to curbside. And I'll follow up on Councilmember Bowlin's question. I do need to completely clarify. I said it absolutely backwards.
Well, wait a minute. Let me just, let me just say, I, I agree with your palette of approaches. But I guess my point is, is that I am concerned about vermin because if it's done incorrectly, it's going to cause a big problem. You could have a rat explosion, a population of rats. So maybe that's a reason why the city needs to take the approach of choosing and then instructing people to choosing the means by which they do it, the container. So that it's vermin proof. And then it pays for itself over time because it means, you know, we're well on our goal and we're paying less for disposal. So sorry to interrupt you. I know you want to.
No, absolutely. No, I appreciate it. Absolutely. If the council would allow, I do need to clarify.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask that Mr. Weason be able to correct the figures for.
Yeah.
Trash recycling.
Yes.
Madam Chair, is that okay?
Yeah.
Councilman, I was, I was saying that exactly backwards. I can't believe I was doing it. It is $26.40 per ton for recycling and $49, it's, I think we're at $49 for disposal on solid waste this year. I was saying that exactly backwards. I didn't, I didn't catch myself on that.
Okay, well, that makes the whole program make a whole lot more sense.
I was wondering why you were, I, I couldn't get how we got so sideways there. I was like, what's, what am I saying wrong? Sorry. So yes, I was saying that exactly backwards.
So just to, to follow up then, the, it's definitely still worth it for us to separate recycling in the way that we're doing.
Oh, absolutely.
In light of the knowledge that plastic is maybe, maybe 9% of plastic is reused, do you think that the sanitation department should be no longer accepting plastic in the recycling bin?
I wouldn't be able to say that today. I think we need to be delving more into that and figuring, you know, I, I think many of us who follow world, you know, follow these things have probably long been skeptical that there were nine different, you know, types of plastic that would be recycled and, and those sorts of things. You know, we've had to change what we accept from previously being able to accept, you know, the styrofoam with the recycling stamp on it.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, so I think we need, need to dig deeper into that. There may be a point where it does make more sense for it to go in, you know, a different stream. But I think we need to kind of see where the market heads and, but very interested in the discussion for sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments from councilmembers right now? Okay, we can pause discussion, go to the public for any comment on the sanitation budget. Mr. Lucas, do you see any raised hands?
I don't at the moment. Folks would like to comment on this budget, please use the raise hand feature to indicate your desire to do so, or if you'd like to send a message via chat, we can recognize you that way. A few seconds. I see no comments.
Okay, thank you. We'll go back to council for final comments on the sanitation budget. Does anyone like to add anything? Councilmember Rowland.
Yes, I really appreciate the clarification. For a minute there, I thought that my entire solid waste world was turned on its head. Poor Mr. Weason, I know he's juggling a lot. And I am very glad to hear that the data that I've been waiting for, for three years is available. I would like it right away. I have hesitated and considered filing public records requests to get it, but I have been patient. But the, the principle of pay as you throw, I know it, it, I think it might appear to Mr. Weason as in the industry, it's, it's disfavored. But I am nowhere near convinced of that yet. It seems self evident from the many people who protested three years ago saying that they already make a point of reducing their waste to almost nothing so that they don't have to buy trash tags, that we should be giving people this option. Why would we put RFID chips in the bins if not to measure that? So, you know, and I for one, don't put out trash that often. So I want my dollar or two back a month. But more importantly, you know, it, if we're at 36% now and we're trying to get to 40%, this is the way to get there. So, you know, to incentivize people, I mean, I, I find it inexplicable. If the reason is we're concerned about the revenues covering the cost of the expenses, well, that's an argument like I made in the last department, the parking department, about where is the pie that shows revenue specifically for sanitation? There are some revenues we're now billing monthly for it. The other thing I'd like to know, and if there's, if Mr. Weason has it tonight, before we go on the vote, I'd love to know how many people have changed bin size in the past year? Have they gone down to smaller bin? They've gone up to a bigger bin? Is there any data on that? That's also an indication of the, the six relative success of the program. It'd be a very interesting data point. So before the vote, I'll, if, if he has that data, I'd like to hear it. But I don't know why we wouldn't be pursuing this and I need much more convincing to be told that pay as you throw is not worth pursuing. So I'm going to abstain on this budget tonight. If, if the data hadn't been available, I would have voted no. The fact that the data is available will lead me to abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, I'll actually just follow up and ask, Mr. Weason, do you have data on people upsizing or downsizing on bins?
We do, I mean, I'm sure, yes, we do have that data. I don't have it directly in front of me right now. I would, you know, I'd just be cautioned in knowing that I'm sure some households probably did increase because of the impacts of COVID and such. And, you know, so, but yes, we, I'm sure we can provide that data.
All data obtained during COVID should be viewed as a result.
That's, that's such a hard part with, you know, solid waste or even parking, you know, it's.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, thank you. Continuing into my final comment. I, I am excited about the data collection and seeing some of that as well, just like Councilmember Rowland. Look forward to following up on that. I share his, his feeling that we should be looking seriously at a pay as you throw model. It's great, the progress we've made with different bin sizes. That's, that's terrific. I like that other cities want to emulate that. But I think, you know, we should continue to strive to reduce and be a leader. And basically, everything we know about behavioral psychology would tell us that pay as you throw will be effective. That, that having that nudge, knowing you're getting charged by the use by, or by the amount is, is, it does, does affect behavior. It's, it's far more effective than, than a sort of automatic system, despite that being very convenient. So I, I would like to continue to look at that. I also appreciate the updates on the various composting waste reduction efforts underway, but still am interested in exploring with the administration moving towards that Phase One Climate Action Plan goal of establishing a pilot food scraps bag program. I think that's a pretty high priority for quite a few councilmembers and I would still like to see movement on that. So I'll be voting no tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo.
Well, I state my preference. I think that, and I think Mr. Weason agrees that in terms of composting, you know, the optimal is for it to stay on site. I mean, there's fossil fuel costs associated with picking it up from all the residents too. So better to stay inside if it can be composted. I, I like some aspects of pay as you throw. I mean, the incentive is there, obviously. But maybe, and I'm also sympathetic to a standardized or confidence anticipating consistency in, in volume of what, what you're getting every week. So maybe a compromise is, you know, possible, like maybe even smaller bin sizes or something like that that would, you know, reward those that are really aiming for minimizing their, their, their waste disposal. So that's, I think, all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes. As was obvious by my first question, I am interested in pursuing a pay as you throw program. I understand the need for consistency and predictability, but maybe there, there can be a, a compromise solution. I think that we, we need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and our carbon footprint by throwing away as little as possible. And if we can encourage that financially, can we know that financial incentives work best? If we can do that here, then we should try. I also want to point out that we, we are still subsidizing sanitation. So what user fees still don't cover the whole cost, I think it's about a million dollars. Although I see in, in the Fund 101, it has a budget of 1.6 million, so I'm not sure what that's about. I should have asked. So this, this leads me to think we should also consider increasing the cost of, of trash pickup. Of course, we want to be smart about this and incremental because we don't want people to start throwing their trash, you know, in our city parks or wherever. But I, I think we do need to gradually bring that cost up. I mean, financial incentives are the, the most effective to get people to stop, you know, wasting, wasting stuff, throwing stuff away, to, to get out of this mentality of a throwaway society, which we, we really must do for the sake of our climate. So for those reasons, I'm going to abstain on this budget tonight.
Thank you. I, I think I'll do a first round final comment and then Councilmember Flaherty, I think I saw your hand if you want to go again. I plan to abstain. I like to abstain to be optimistic about some changes between now and the real vote. From the Climate Action Plan, it, it calls for a pilot program to be implemented in 2023. So a request that some of us had was just a plan for that pilot program in 2022. So make space and devote some funding to it so that it, it would be ready to be rolled out. The Climate Action Plan says it should be for residential and commercial and industrial properties for the pilot composting plan that you throw a bag of trash into, a bag of food scraps into the trash and then get separated later. So I would like to see, I think, to me, it feels small potentially, I mean, I, I don't know, but to just a space to plan for that pilot program in 2023. I, I'm also a fan of pay as you throw. According to the table that Mr. Weason put up, it looks like most households put their bins out about two times per month. So I think if, if we did pay as you go, most households would think they are benefiting because they, it looks like most, most don't put trash bins out every single week. So I think people would actually be excited about that and feel like they were winning and saving money. And hopefully, of course, for the environment, they would actually be not throwing away so much. I am, I'm not, I'm not as big of a fan as composting onsite because I think so many people have the option to do that right now and so many people do not. In Prospect Hill, we had a workshop where you could get free compost bins made for your backyard and one person did it. So I think for me, I think there is a very big barrier for folks to put food scraps in the backyard. And I think there's also a very big difference between putting food scraps in your backyard and composting in your backyard. I think, I think we would be looking at a pretty serious problem of trash in backyard and rodents and deer eating out, out of those bins if we really pushed that. I mean, I think there are already a lot of programs in the city, not with the city, but at nonprofits that give away bins or give discount bins. So I think if people wanted that, like they pretty much have access. And like I said, it doesn't really happen in my neighborhood. Also with that pilot program, okay, well, in the meeting with the mayor, he said most trash, we, the city collects 5% of. we, the city collects five percent of the trash that goes to the landfill. And I think that's because we do not collect multifamily trash and we do not collect commercial and industrial trash. So it is an interesting thing, like if we only collect compost from where we collect trash, we still have a lot of other places to reach to really decrease that. Sorry, it took all that time. I hope that made sense. But we just have a lot to do to actually decrease our landfill by like the forty percent that's possible, I would say. Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, just a brief clarification and follow up from Mr. Rallo's, Councilmember Rallo's point, which is to say that I agree, of course, with him and Mr. Wason, that the ideal or optimal is to compost onsite in your backyard. I absolutely support that, agree with it, think we should support it with educational resources and other tools, perhaps leaves from compost, or sorry, mulching programs. But I think my point was, and I think councilmember Rosenberger just made it as well, is that there's a, a very much an uptake threshold, a limit that we're going to reach. And it's probably not all that high. And if we really want to push composting and, and follow with the Climate Action Plan, we've adopted recommends, we do need to have a collection program and we need to start planning for that. Thank you.
Another councilmember Rallo?
Well, just to be clear, I'm, I'm for a palette of approaches. So I'm not averse to, you know, picking it up if, if that is people's preference. But I think that, you know, if even ten percent or twenty percent do it, and they can do it safely. It doesn't, a deer can't get into a compost bin that's sealed. So people do it and they do it safely. And it actually, as the soil fertility doesn't go away, you know, it's actually good for the environment that, that it stays. So I think that should be just one approach. There are many other approaches, of course.
Thank you. Any other comments from councilmembers? Okay, I think we're ready to consider a due pass on the sanitation budget. Okay, I'll call the roll. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Councilmember Volan?
Abstain.
Councilmember Scambleary?
Yes.
Okay, councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Simms?
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty?
No.
Okay, councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Abstain.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
And I will abstain. So for sanitation, we have five, one, three. And last but not least, we will move on to the street budget.
Alrighty. And now for the final presentation of the marathon known as the Department of Public Works Budget Presentations. As the largest, there we go, as the largest division within the Public Works Department, the street division is the most diverse division in terms of the number of types of services delivered by the department. The thirty eight, just over thirty eight FTEs are responsible for street paving and maintenance, alleys, curbs, ramps, snow removal, mark, lane markings and, and traffic marking signs, traffic control devices and leaf collection. It's a wide range of responsibility areas and one that we do, in my opinion, really well. Our 2021 paving and patching goals and efforts are on schedule to be met. We're also in the process of contracting our next round of pavement, sidewalk and signage inspections. This data has been some of the most important information we've been able to obtain for as long as we've been responsible for city rights away. And if you recall back in 2017, it was the first time we had done a technological approach to determining the condition of our street network and, excuse me, and our sidewalk network. So in, in terms of snow removal and the 2021 budget goals, I'd say 2021, that we've had enough snow for 2021. We need no more snow in 2021 and that we can wait for a future year for more snowfall, knowing that likely won't be the case before we get to next year. We're ready to go. We've, as the council is aware and has supported in the past, we've made capital expenditures for brining equipment. So a different approach than just our traditional car gill clear lane de-icer approach. Terms of 2021 budget goals with leaf removal, the council is very much well aware that we've been looking at how we do leaf removal in 2020 and 2021 now. And this fall, we're going to, we're in the process of implementing a expanded and much larger pilot project through the one hundred, one thousand households who mulch program for sidewalk maintenance. You know, we've got ambitious goals in terms of the number of ADA ramp improvements that we're going to make and the amount of contracted in-house sidewalk repairs we're going to make. You know, sidewalks get a lot of attention and we've talked a lot about sidewalks in, in budget hearings in years past. And I'm sure we will again this year. You know, the one thing I would say is that the city, you know, it's, it's long been known that property owners are responsible for sidewalk repair adjacent to their property. Where the city focuses our efforts, whether it's the repair assistance program or contracted repairs and removal or replacements or sidewalk grinding projects and such, we're always going to look for the biggest bang for the buck. And right now, that's without a doubt with the saw cutting and grinding program. We're going to look to underserved, or under, to demographic areas of the city with underserved populations. And we're going to also focus our efforts on sidewalk repairs that are due to street tree damage. So that's the heaving of a sidewalk due to a city-owned street tree. So, you know, that's kind of just for a philosophical background on how we approach sidewalks within public works. For additional 2021 budget goal updates, we're continuing to replace signs that were shown not to meet MUTCD standards and as far as our 2017 data collection and continuing to work on traffic signal coordination efforts with the engineering department, utilizing smart city type technologies. 2022, moving into 2022 budget goals, you know, our paving and patching efforts are going to be very similar. We're going to try to fill a pothole as quickly as we possibly can. Once it's reported to us, we're going to continue to try to maintain the street network with, with paving, repaving at least ten lane miles per year. And then also going to continue our efforts to, to apply for state matching funds for community crossing grant programs. 2022 snow removal efforts are always, are going to remain the same as they have in years past. We're going to stay and continue to clear roads until, until winter weather events and, winter weather storm events end. You know, we've talked a lot about snow control over the years. We've talked a lot about, you know, additional snow control in pedestrian facilities. And just a couple of points that I'd like to make. You know, when we have multi-day snow events, you know, you're, the, the kind of, the concept of an uphill battle is certainly one that we're, we're fighting when it comes to multi-day snow events. You know, if you have major snowfall one day, you get it cleared and within 24 hours, you start to receive more snow. Obviously, we're going to always try to maintain the street network first and foremost for safe travel, for public safety and all the reasons, you know. But we also do focus a lot on pedestrian facilities. So every city maintains side path, every sidewalk adjacent to a city facility of any kind, whether that's a park, a city building, a city-owned property, et cetera. We're going to be doing the snow removal from those pedestrian facilities. We also do a lot of contracted snow removal for side paths for other facilities that, that we own and maintain. And, you know, this is, this includes areas in the downtown. This includes adding the overpasses of I-69 that are within city limits to our snow clearing contract. You know, last year was very telling to me when we reached out to NDOT and said, hey, by the way, you guys haven't cleared any of the pedestrian facilities you built as part of the I-69 network. And we were very clearly told that NDOT does not do such things, that if it's beyond the curb, anything beyond the curb, whether it's repair of a sidewalk or clearing snow from it, is not something NDOT does. NDOT is responsible curb to curb, in their opinion, and, and doesn't do those things. So, you know, even last year, when we recognized that with the, the overpasses, we immediately, well, we, after several days of being told NDOT wouldn't help, you know, we, we took it upon ourselves to try to get out there and, and do the snow removal. Those are important pedestrian pathways. We recognize that. And so we're adding that to our contracted snow removal. That's a cost directly related, you know, directly absorbed by the city, but it's important. And so those are things we've done. We've put together a preliminary map with every single location throughout the city where we do snow removal from pedestrian facilities. We're doing a little bit further analysis of that to try to figure out linear feet and things like that. So we will, we, we have that information. We're continuing to compile it and, and will are happy to provide that to the council. It's something we are, you know, doing and it's something we're interested in, in, you know, considering doing more of when, when needed. I know we talk a lot about those, those types of facilities where, you know, folks needing to walk have, have struggles. You know, last year, we also worked on South Walnut Street. We know we have a monolithic sidewalk to South Walnut. So we took our bobcat down there and tried to clear and, and did a lot of the same things within the downtown, especially trying to clear ADA ramps. Terms of leaf removal, I don't know that I need to highlight much more other than we're, you know, continuing the pilot. We'll get a lot of good information based on this fall's program to try to influence decision-making on how we want to move forward in 2022 and beyond in terms of the leafing program. Excuse me, as I mentioned earlier, we're updating our overall condition index ratings for sidewalks, streets and traffic signs in 2021. As part of our asset management efforts, we'll continue to upgrade every ADA ramp on a street that we're repaving. And we're going to continue our sidewalk repair assistance program and our trip hazard removal program that I've mentioned with the saw cutting and the grinding. As far as traffic signals, again, working very closely with the engineering department to do a full overhead cabinet inspection for all traffic signals, we'll be finishing that up. We'll be doing that in 2022 with the next step of that being, you know, the implementation and prioritization of traffic signal upgrades at the various locations as, throughout the community, as, as we talked about with councilmember Flaherty in the first budget presentation this evening. You know, we also work with the Parks and Recreation Department a lot on managing the urban forest and, you know, have goals to make sure that we're responding to all hazardous tree conditions in the street, in streets or alleys within one day. And trying to continue our effort at removing just dead and hazardous, hazardous trees citywide. For 2022, we're continuing our, we're now going from replacing the, all the signs that were in the poor category to will replace in 2021 or 2022, the fair condition rated signs and then have a new set of data to influence years to come based on our inspections this fall. For pavement markings, city is responsible for reapplying 100% of our longline pave marking, pavement markings each year. You probably noticed last week that we had those folks in town doing that work and something we'll do each and every year. Looking at also with our street sweeping efforts, you know, we're trying to hit every city street within two ti, at least two times per year and the downtown and commercial areas a little more often. This has been, you know, a large topic of conversation with Public Works and Utilities and others, mayor's office. And, and in conjunction with that Brighton B-Town program, you know, one of the things that keeps being brought to my attention is the, kind of the curb appeal and beautification efforts between the curb and the pavement or the sidewalk and the curb and, and doing weed removal and things like that. Definitely a focus of ours, something we're looking to have even a better and further impact on. Terms of 2022 goals with streetlights, you know, we've identified a plan for LED conversion in terms of a three-year program to replace all of our city streets lights that are non-LED. Now's the time that we're, you know, trying to identify funding sources. We've got a lot with the infrastructure bill or different federal funding coming out that we're hopeful that, that we can find some resources to implement the plan that we've been working on with Duke Energy. Just moving on to some budget highlights for category 451 or for MVH 451 and the MVH 456 restricted fund, seeing major increases in capital outlays and for both equipment and for matching costs for potential community crossing grants. And pretty significant reduction from category three as well. For the LRS, the Local Road and Street 450 Fund, quest is about four percent lower than 2021, mainly due to some equipment cost savings and lower costs due to the LED conversion projects at the showers complex. For CCD 601 and CCI 600, again, this is an area where we're putting the match funding for possible community crossing grants. So there's a pretty big increase there. And then just to highlight the recover forward phase three. And I'll probably need the controller to jump in at some point in time to help me describe all of this. But this is our effort to replace lost revenues and make sure we're still able to meet our goals and, and capital replacement projects. So that's a one-time budget request of one million for the ARPA funding phase three. Overall budget request for the street department or street division of Public Works is just under eight million dollars for all activities and with the additional one million for the ARPA funding request. Happy to answer any questions about our 2022 street division budget request to finish out the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wason. We will now go to councilmember questions as soon as I can see folks.
I thought the rule was for the last presentation, there were no questions.
That's why you put streets last.
Yes.
I'll just shower praise on you. No, I actually do have questions. By the way, there was a study that just came out a few days ago and sadly, I mean, LED lights, of course, are efficient, much more efficient. So they're good for climate, but it turns out that they're bad for insects, that they're attracting many more insects and resulting in their death. So we have an insect. But let's, let's see how that plays out because maybe there are certain wavelengths. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So the, I, I was wondering about this, this, so, so on your website, it says we have two hundred, two hundred and thirty-four, you say two hundred and thirty-seven miles of road, but is that lane miles or is that miles?
Lane miles.
Lane miles, okay. And you're, and you're trying to do about ten to fifteen or about twelve street lane miles per year.
Joe, jump in here if you want. So when we say two hundred and thirty-seven miles roadway, that's traffic in both directions. That's the whole road. We have two thirty, two hundred and thirty-seven miles of roadway.
It kind of makes a difference because, you know, if it, if it's, if it's miles, miles of road and we can assume, I mean, there are at least two lanes, that means you're going to probably repave all the roads in about forty years, which is a long time. But if it's lane miles, maybe it's, maybe it's about twenty years. I was just curious to know, like, how, you know, what's the expectation in terms of repaving a road? Is it essentially every twenty years or is it, is that your target? I, I assume some roads are going to need it more often, obviously, the ones that are traveled. the ones that are traveled more, but is it on average, I guess I'm saying?
Yep.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Joe.
This is Joe Van Devener. That's lane miles. And it does, it depends on the, whether it's an arterial, the volume of traffic as to how soon it would get repaved.
Gotcha. Okay, well, it sounds like it's on average in every 20 years.
Yep.
It sounds about right, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, again, you know, like a street like College or Walnut's probably every 10 years minimum for repaving, whereas, you know, a neighborhood street with very little traffic is probably closer to 20 or 25.
Gotcha.
Yep.
And I see you recycle, reuse, I should say you reuse a lot of the asphalt, correct?
Yes, we have a contract to, with our asphalt supplier to provide them our millings for reuse.
Great, thanks.
Other council member questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I was surprised in your memo, Mr. Wayson, that you mentioned that next year would be a continuation of the leafing pilot program. I mean, this is already the second year that we're doing a pilot and we're doing 1,000 households this year, hopefully. Why would we continue to pilot instead of implementing something next year?
I don't think it's that we're opposed to, you know, looking at what happens this year and possibly making decisions. These budget hearings happen kind of, they happen right before our leaf season each year. So it's, you know, in 2020, we began a pilot with very few households. This year, 21, we're trying to get to 1,000 households. You know, depending on the information we come, that is resulted of that pilot, it's possible that next year we would. Otherwise, it may be that we're trying to expand to 3,000 households next year with a, you know, expansion of the pilot. I think that's the whole point is that it's to be determined based on what we learned from the expansion of the pilot.
I see. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Flaherty, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. There was a couple of mentions of community crossing grants, opportunities. Will these, will strategizing for what to apply for, what to apply for be coordinated among engineering, planning, and public works?
Hundred percent.
Okay, great. Thank you. And also, I think you mentioned this earlier when I asked my question in the administration budget, budget presentation, but the overhead cabinet inspection of all traffic signals. Good to have the total number there, 84. Was that, was I mistaken or was that on the 2021 goals list that you had in your presentation?
It was. It was originally intended for 2021. With all of the revenue shortfalls and everything else, we've pushed it to 2022, and that's why I removed it from the presentation as a 2021 goal.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I might have more, but I'll actually stop for this round. Thanks.
Other first round question, Councilmember Campbell Larry?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for keeping us up to date on intentions to apply for community crossings grants. Is there anything in your mind that we could do to make ourselves more competitive, to better position ourselves for the community crossings? And then a second related question is, are there any other sources of funding that we've identified? I asked utilities too. I'm always a big fan of external money paying for something in Bloomington.
Sure. So twofold on that one. First is the idea of community crossings and what we can do to leverage and have, what I'd say to that is, we've actually been really successful outside of our first application in 2016, I think it was. The last three, I think we're three for three on our last three applications. The, one of the difficulties and with the community crossings is it's a match up to $1 million. So the state can do up to a million if the city, it's having projects that are shovel-ready of that size, designed and ready to go out the door for the larger ones. And so that's why we're trying, you know, and to Mr. Flaherty's question of, you know, collaborating, and that's where we've got our internal team between planning and transportation, engineering and public works, all looking at, okay, what would be a big project we'd go for? Where would our matching funds come from? And then what are other smaller projects in case we can't identify a full million dollar match? And to your second question, yes, we're always looking for possible outside funding opportunities, looking very much forward to the infrastructure bill and receiving some assistance probably from some outside help and identifying what might be really good projects to go for there. You know, I can say things like the hospital site and others that are going to be big, community-changing projects would probably be a really good place to look for those.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions from council members? I will, I will ask one. I'm glad to get that community crossing grant update. It was on my list. Thank you for that. Leading pedestrian intervals, first, is this something I would talk to you about or engineering?
Leading pedestrian, I would say engineering in terms of, like, yes.
I guess, well, I'm still, my question is like, who knows how many we have? How many signals have that capability in the city right now?
I think part of that will be informed by the inspection program that we've proposed. I'm sure Joe could probably, based on memory, go through signal by signal and start, you know, so first off, we can provide you that information and then work with engineering on, you know, furthering those efforts or providing information back to the council.
Okay, that, that sounds great. I know with the No Right Turn on Red, we talked about adding some of those, especially where it's possible, but no one really knew where we, where that technology existed because not all signals have it, I guess.
That's absolutely true. We've definitely got some older signals that have zero ability to do that. But we also have some newer signals that could do it for sure.
Okay, thank you. That is it for now. First round questions from anyone who hasn't asked yet and wants to circle around for anyone who's ready. Third round for anyone who wants to get ahead, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, so I wanted to ask about snow on sidewalks. And I'm looking forward to seeing that map that you mentioned, Mr. Wayson. But I, of course, as it currently stands legally, the property owner is responsible for clearing the snow off of sidewalks. Is it your department that enforces that or is it Hand or who does?
That'd be Hand.
Okay. And we had talked with the administration, some council members had talked with the administration about possibly doing a pilot project based on the most frequently used sidewalks and those that are monolithic, where there's really nowhere for the snow to go once it's cleared from the street except onto the sidewalk. So it's kind of like, well, the city by clearing the street for cars is making it a bigger problem for pedestrians. Is that something you would consider for next year?
Whether it's a pilot program or just expansion or continuation of what we're currently doing, you know, again, I think the council's going to be a little surprised when they see the amount of clearing we do for pedestrian roadways. You know, it's not cheap. It's, and that's where that kind of multi-day snow event really gets to become even more difficult to manage from that perspective of, you know, continually trying to keep roadways free and clear so that you can, you know, have police fire, everybody, all vehicles needing to move, do what they need to, but to then continually, you know, go back as the city to remove from sidewalks that don't fall under our responsibility. It's tough. It's difficult. We try to do our best with these things. We're identifying, you know, like with the I-69 stuff, we're identifying areas where we know people need to walk and trying to add those. And then again, with the inventory, which we already do, it's quite significant.
You had mentioned in your presentation that you did do some sidewalk clearing on South Walnut this past winter. What was that based on? Was that just?
Just kind of seeing what we had going and knowing we had a few free minutes with the Bobcat and the Snow Blade, you know. It, you know, that is, so if you think of South Walnut between, well, I think south of Second or actually south of First, probably, it's going to be monolithic the vast majority of the way down Walnut, you know, so we, you know, we were out and about and we realized it was there. And you almost need a, on those monolithic, you almost need the, it to go really like coordinated and in tandem, you know, almost simultaneously where the, you know, you're pushing it off the sidewalks and following up with, or pushing it off the road and then following up with the sidewalks. You know, it's, it's, it's a complicated effort, but you know, when, you know, the other thing we did a lot last year because we, you know, had those pretty significant snowfalls was when we went and we utilized the Centerstone crews and other city staff to go make sure that ramps and things were being cleared in the downtown because that's important, you know, so it's not that we're opposed to a pilot. It's we do a lot already and it's expensive already. So, you know, always up for the discussion.
Thank you. Other questions from council members? Okay, I think we can pause, go to the public. See if they have any public comments on the street budget. Or maybe it's just the street budget. Okay, it looks like Mr. Alexander. I see one hand raised.
Yes, Greg Alexander should now be able to comment.
Great, thanks. My name is Greg Alexander. You know, I can tell you that sidewalks in general aren't being maintained. I can also tell you that the 2008 Greenway System Plan passed by his council does butt responsibility for maintaining sidewalks on Public Works, but I don't know what happens inside of Public Works. So all I can do is case studies. The first one I can see from my front door, railroad bridge at about 12th and Rogers. This spring, I saw that the sidewalk was completely blocked and I witnessed pedestrians walking in the street. I filed a U report and it was forwarded to Public Works, and a week later, they trimmed it back. That's the second time I've ever witnessed anything like that, and it's awesome. On the other hand, the city knew pedestrians were walking in the street on a busy road and let that hazard stand for a week, a whole week. So that success story still leaves room for improvement. But because that bridge is closed right now, I've been using the rail crossing at Fairview Street instead. There's a long story there, but basically the sidewalk has not once been cleared fully of vegetation in at least 10 years, and it was only cleared at all once in all of 2020, and that wasn't by Public Works. So it has been chronically and deeply obstructed, much worse than the one on Rogers. I reported it more than three weeks ago now. It was assigned to Public Works, but nothing happened for two weeks. So I kind of lost my temper and I went and I started working on it myself. That one spot has been three hours of work so far because the mature honeysuckle was just that thick. We, I've got about one and a half more hours of work that I still want to do out there with a shovel and pickaxe to remove all of the dirt and roots that are covering the inner one foot of the sidewalk to restore the sidewalks, the original engineered width. A lot of our sidewalks, especially at rail crossings, need that kind of deep cleaning from years of neglect. Someone bothered to pour a five or six-foot concrete slab. Pedestrians deserve the benefit of that full width. And snow removal, man. Last year, I cleared the snow off the sidewalks on Madison Street from 15th all the way to 11th Street. And the only property where the owner hadn't at least made a token effort before I got there was the city-owned vacant lot on my block. I've literally never seen the snow there cleared except when I've done it at a city-owned lot. You know who trims the trees back from the sidewalk at that city-owned lot? It's me. I tell you unequivocally, Public Works is not clearing sidewalks at all city-owned properties. So I really don't know what responsibilities Public Works has accepted upon itself. I don't know if things are slipping through the cracks because they've rejected the responsibility or because they don't have the capacity. I'm again optimistic there.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. I'm sorry, we're at two minutes. Thanks for sticking with us tonight. Any other public comment?
I do not believe so.
Back to council for more questions, comments? Looks like no more questions. Would anyone like to make a comment before we? Councilmember Flaherty?
I actually do have a question. To follow up on Mr. Alexander's questions about maintenance. I don't know if Mr. Wayson would like to weigh in about the challenges. I would imagine that this is just a capacity issue and an enforcement issue both. What do you have to say about, about the challenges and where maybe we're falling short on sidewalk maintenance and clearing?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's absolutely both. Whose responsibility is it? Is it, you know, I'm interested to know which city-owned lot he's referring to. But, you know, in many instances, it's not city property that has the vegetation growing over it. As you heard from the engineering team earlier, they're, you know, actively trying to enforce those encroachments and, you know, will, from time to time, well, as you heard from them earlier, they're actively trying to enforce those things as well. In the case of the bridge that Mr. Alexander spoke about, that's technically a county-owned bridge within city limits. I thought we got to it well before a week. But, you know, that was brought to our attention and we went out and trimmed back what was, you know, impacting a sidewalk that we knew pedestrians traveled on. It wasn't our property. It was a county-owned bridge, but we wanted to improve that. We got a complaint the other day about the new side path along Rogers Road there with weeds and things growing over the handrails. We went and trimmed that back. So we do go back and do these things, you know, especially when they are pointed out to be city properties and things like that. Part of it is, you know, Councilmember Flaherty, that just the pure volume of vegetative growth that happens in any given year, you know, we, we've got our schedules and where we go and trim back and know we need to mow and keep Wright's Way clear and everything else. But in most all, in many, many, and I guess the majority of cases, these are often private properties that are, you know, the result of the growth into the Wrightaway and, you know, I again, don't, won't get into legal matters in that regard, but we'll trim it back if it's a safety issue in a heartbeat. You know, if we know we have a known safety issue, we're going to block in a stop sign or a traffic signal or, you know, we're going to take that upon ourselves, but, you know, we can't also just go trim back vegetation on private property, you know, at free will on our own. So it's a combination and it's cross-departmental. It doesn't fall just to, it doesn't just fall to Public Works. And thank you for that address, Greg. I'll look it up.
Thanks. I appreciate those insights.
Absolutely.
Other council member questions or comments? I would like to follow up on a question about that bridge. Are we talking about the bridge at 11th and Rogers?
I believe, yes.
And that's county-owned?
County, yeah. So the county, any bridge or culvert structure over, I believe, 20 feet falls to county per state code.
Is it just the sidewalk that belongs to the county or the street?
The bridge itself and then the street surface. Yeah.
I'm sorry, this is a dumb question, but do we pave that, do we plow that street for snow? Or is it the county's responsibility to?
We plow, no, we plow that for snow with, I could point out a couple of other examples, you know, any, any city, any county maintained bridge within the city is going to be plowed by the city. You know, we also have some, you know, agreements with County Highway on things where, you know, I could provide a bunch of different examples, but like Corey Lane is a county road, but it's in city limits. And I know we've always plowed it. And then there's a portion of a city street that's over more where the county does a lot of work and they plow that one for us. You know, so there is some partnership and agreements there in place. But in terms of that specifically, we would plow it over the bridge, yet they would maintain the structure.
Okay, okay. Okay, I mean, I was just asking because like, to me, it makes sense if we are maintaining that space for one mode of transportation, we should then maintain it for all modes of transportation. So I think, I mean, it wouldn't be the county's job to clear the sidewalk of branches, right? It would, I mean, it would still be our job.
Yeah, and we went and cleared them. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I was just asking if we're actually trying to get the county to come in and do those things if we do them. Okay. I'm sorry, I saw a chat. Any other comments, questions? Does anyone want to do a final comment on the street? Any council person want to do a final comment on the street budget? Okay. This one's going quicker than I thought. Okay, so let's consider due pass recommendation on the, did I miss the? This one's going quicker than I thought. Okay, so let's consider due pass recommendation on the, did I miss a hand? No, okay. On the street's budget, Public Works, council member Rallo?
Yes.
Council member Scambalary?
Yes.
Council member Smith?
Yes.
Council member Piedmont Smith?
Abstain.
Council member Sandberg?
Yes.
Council member Simmons?
Yes.
Council member Flaherty?
Abstain.
Council member Volan?
Abstain.
And I will abstain. That is 504 for the street budget and that is our last budget of the evening. So thank you everyone for being here and I will see you tomorrow 8:00 AM. Just kidding, but thanks very much and have a great night.
Hey, councilman Rosenbarger, did you look on the agenda?
Do I, do we have something else?
I think the last part says council comment on city budget.
Oh.
Well, that's just what the agenda says. I was just thought I'd remind that before everyone took off.
Okay, I think I forgot, yeah, I forgot about that.
Mr. Lucas is there to correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay. I think that's correct. It is, it is on the agenda. I just didn't put it into my notes for the night. So we can stick around and if any council member would like to make a final comment on the budget hearing, now is the time. Okay. I'm sorry, I feel like I messed that one up. Council member Flaherty?
I won't get into my overall thoughts on the budget, just a plug to think about continuing to reform our process in future years. I think maybe dividing this over two weeks or doing it a little bit differently would be in everyone's interest, including the public especially. So that's all for me tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. I would just briefly say, I think we had a lot of abstentions in these last four days and you know, I think that means we all just have a lot of questions to ask in the next month or so and a lot more in this process. And I look forward to working with all of you and the administration to make sure we really deliver a budget everyone feels comfortable with to the city. Anyone else? Council member Simmons?
Thank you. I'll be as brief as possible. I think this is, well, I know, this is my fifth year of city budget process and I think that puts me somewhere in the middle of the pack with experience. We've got some long-term folks and a few lesser folks. But what I like to say is that sometimes I don't really care for politics, specifically the negative aspects of politics as perceived publicly. You know, for making that statement, I have been applauded by some. But I've also been advised, chastised, and what felt like being victimized. Oftentimes, the negative aspects of politics leave no room for compromise or collaboration, and to me, that is unacceptable. I have enjoyed the diversity and the, and the passion exhibited in our debates and our deliberations over the last four days of these budget presentations. I continue to learn a lot from my colleagues and the public. I agree with many of the points championed by my colleagues and the administration, but I also disagree with some of the other points. Agree or not, I endeavor to listen intently during our deliberations, which is how it should be when you have two ears and one mouth, right? I have great respect for the due diligence of my colleagues and for the expertise of our city staff. I simply want to help the public at large in my role as a local government elected representative and I still consider it a blessing to be able to do so. Yet sometimes I don't care for politics, specifically the negative aspects of politics as often publicly perceived. Thank you all for listening and have a good night.
Thank you very much, council member Simmons. Anyone else? Final comment? Okay. Okay, well, thank you all again and see you sometime soon. Have a wonderful weekend.
Mr. Lucas?
Just, just real quick, I'll just remind members of the council and for those members of the public that have stuck with us that under the council's annual schedule, the budget-related legislation is scheduled to come to the council for introduction and discussion on September 29th at a special session, followed by a committee meeting. And then two weeks later, on October 13th, the council has a scheduled special session for second reading and an adoption hearing on the budget-related ordinances. So that's the current schedule. I just wanted to give a brief reminder of what's coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from anyone? I'm sorry, anyone? Okay. Okay, well, thank you again and see you all soon. Goodnight.